Will you lead us in the pledge? Please rise, put your hand over your heart, remove your hat.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Sheevy.
Here.
Breckus.
Here.
Zadra.
Delgado.
George.
Jordan.
Kachal.
Here.
Leonard Gilbert Munoz.
Munoz, I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, sir. That's okay. No problem. Thank you for having me here, and I just want to say that my wife and I have been residents of Reno for six years. We are part of the immigrants from Southern California. We love it here in Reno, and we love the service that your city has provided most of the time. However, I'm here today to let this panel know how unhappy and disappointed my wife and I are with this council, with this panel, in regards to recent actions. Those actions, of course, involve the fire department, the Reno Fire Department. And to be sure, it is not only us, my wife and I, that feel this way. Many, many Reno folks can't believe what you are doing to the residents of this wonderful city. We can't believe that you are about to expose us to extreme danger because of these layoffs and brownouts. Please don't allow this to occur. I understand the SAFE for Grant, but didn't you realize the SAFE for Grant was only for two years? Didn't you curtail your spending, your spending ways, so you could store money to help avoid layoffs and brownouts? Last month, my wife and I were jubilant when Station 12 was completed and opened and began serving not only the Damone Ranch area, but the entire city of Reno. But now we see brownouts in other parts of the city. You spent tax money to establish a park in a closed golf course. Was that really necessary? How many lives or serious injuries will that park prevent? There are many of us senior citizens throughout Reno who recognize the dangers involved. We wonder what layoffs and brownouts will do to response times. We wonder if units will arrive in time if we suffer heart attacks. We wonder if grandkids are hurt at home, at school, or in traffic, will the assistance rendered by firefighters throughout the city will arrive in time. Many of us are caregivers to our spouses who suffer from various ailments. My wife and I are in that category. We both become consumed with anxiety when I have to go marketing or run various errands and leave her at home unattended. If something happens, will the fire department arrive in time while I am gone? I fear that, and I know all about fear. I'm a retired police officer from the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, sir.
I grew up in the inner city. Anyways, please, if you can avoid the brownouts, please do that. Thank you.
Ruth Hilty. Ruth Hilty, okay, here she comes.
I can't believe we're doing this again. Five years ago, we did this. Three years ago, we did this. Two years ago, we did this, and we warned you that the firefighters would fight a fire at Collin Ranch, and well, we ended up doing it. And the city council said, and I quote, "That Station 7 being closed while a fire at Collin Ranch had no bearing that if a fire happened at Collin Ranch, it would be under control under the whole time." That is what you said, Mayor, with Governor Sandoval, that Station 7 being closed would have no bearing, that you had it under control. And it's funny, because while I was taking my boys to a friend's house, being evacuated, I saw on Gibraltar Drive, on Skyline, two Humvees from the Army Base of Fernley and Fallon, a pink ribbon fire truck, whoever that was, I thank you greatly, Sparks Fire Engine, Sacramento Fire Engine. And when I came back, I was escorted back to my house by a Livermore fire truck. So for the city council to say that Reno did this on their own was a big fat lie. Just on Skyline and Gibraltar, I saw Sparks Fire Engine, again, the pink ribbon, Livermore, Sacramento, Las Vegas, Farad, Army's fire truck from Fernley and Fallon, their regular fire department from Fernley and Fallon, Gerlock, Carson City, North and South Lake, Tahoe, just to name a few. When I went back, I soaked my neighborhood down. I was not going to lose not one home, not one home on my block. I watched two of my neighbor's house burn down, and I watched a neighborhood gentleman run out of his house and have a heart attack. I got stopped by a police officer, and he told me I should leave. I said, "I'm married to a fireman. If I lost my house, I'd be disowned, but I'm not going to let anything happen to my neighborhood." He then got a call and said Station 7 was being threatened. I told him then, "Should I spray down your car so you don't lose your car?" I left my neighborhood at 5:00 a.m. and made it to Moana Station and started throwing up black stuff. I was rushed to St. Mary's Hospital, where I was diagnosed with carbon monoxide poisoning and smoke inhalation. I didn't hear from my husband for three days. I didn't get back to my house until two days later. Now, I want to make a point. With the cutbacks you're making, my husband might die because you don't have enough men to go to a fire with enough adequate backup or enough men to be on a fire truck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I could sue you for a wrongful death suit, every single one of you on the panel.
I said, "Thank you." Melanie Leser. Leser, I butchered that up.
Thank you very much. Hello. I have had the pleasure of working in Washoe County School District for the past 15 years, and I have been at some amazing schools. I am currently at Proctor R. Hugue High School, and we are right next to Station 2 on Sutro. If the brownouts do go through, Station 2 will not be browned out, but Station 10 will. Station 2 may have to respond to their calls, which will leave us exposed. I'll just give you a quick, short story. I've only been at Hugue for less than two years. First week of school last year, one of our 15-year-old students collapsed on the blacktop. He was in full cardiac arrest. We are not medical professionals. Our coach performed CPR. He did an amazing job. Our students called 911. Station 2 was there within minutes. They stabilized him, got him to the hospital, and our student lived. But they didn't just stop there. That student and his family had just moved from Georgia. They didn't have a support network here. Off-duty firefighters went to the hospital, and he was there for quite a while, several weeks, in a coma. They went there, comforting his mother, cheering up his younger siblings, who couldn't understand why their big brother couldn't come home. They did that on their own time. What about this year? Friday Night Football. It's wonderful, great tradition, so fun. We had a mom going across the street to go meet her daughters. You know, everyone's in the stands. We got cheerleaders, we got the band, we got our athletes. It's a fantastic way to spend a Friday night. Her daughters didn't get to see her. She was struck by an SUV crossing on Sutro. She did not die because Station 2 was right there, and they were able to administer lifesaving support for her and get her to the hospital. We at Hugue High School are a staff of about 200. We service over 1,400 kids. We can educate, we can inspire, we can feed, we can clothe, we'll discipline, we'll coach, we'll do all of that. None of us can magically become a first responder or a firefighter in times of crisis and need. We need the help from Reno Fire Department, and we do not want to see layoffs or brownouts in our city. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Brian Holm.
My name is Brian Holm. I'm the head swim coach for Reno Aquatic Club. Just want to talk on behalf of the Northwest Community Pool up there in Northwest Reno Neighborhood. Just to kind of give you some insight, I know you're going to hear some more talks about some other swimming communities, but that pool is very important to the community, to youths and adults in the whole area. Reno Aquatic Club was established in 1973 and has been around for 40 years. The opportunities that swimming can provide for adults and, more importantly, youth swimming at the high school level is an opportunity for discipline, good character. It can lead into a higher education, allowing these kids to be able to get acceptance into college. Sometimes, students may not have the grades to get in, but they might have the athletic skill to be able to get accepted into a college. They also would receive financial aid in order to be able to get that secondary degree through athletics. A secondary degree in college would be able to allow them to study something for a future career and allow them for a lot of success. Because of the opportunities that we've had, or the opportunities that coaches and the swim programs that we have in Reno has provided swimmers with experience at swimming at the national level. We've had national champions. We've had American record holders. We have had even Olympians that qualified for the U.S. team in 1984, regional, state, and local champions. So, I mean, just the experience alone and the self-confidence that athletes receive through the benefit of sports and swimming is definitely a plus for all individuals. Not to mention, that pool that we have serves the community and so many people, close to 1,000. I mean, we have four high school teams running there right now. We got three United States swim teams that are involved with that, an adult masters program. We offer scuba diving. The city even offers swim lessons to help teach kids how to swim to prevent drownings because we're surrounded by rivers, lakes. And also, you know, like I said, the kayak, the scuba diving, even the fire department uses their water rescue classes there, not classes, but they do their training there. And then just the pools itself offer swim meets. And with those swim meets, we get about 750 people coming into Reno area, which supports the tourism, supports the community, gives money back while staying in the hotels. So, I just wanted to try to, I appreciate the time that you give me to kind of share these informations, to kind of express how important pools are. We're limited with pool space in this area, but I know it's not the most popular sport, but it's a great sport. It does wonders for so many people in the community. And again, I just appreciate your time to hear me out. So, thank you, and good luck with your decision.
Thank you very much. Mike Ginsburg.
For the record, my name is Mike Ginsburg. I'm with Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics, and hopefully Lynette was able to pass you our little flyer. On Saturday, May 31st, we're going to have our fourth annual Adopt a Pool. This started four years ago, when the city of Reno was going to be unable to open up the pools, and we kind of did a private-public partnership, where we teamed up with all of the swim groups. That's every, from Reno Aquatics, to Lakewood, to NNA, to the Sierra Nevada Masters. And working with Public Works and Parks and Recreation, we came up with a way to actually lend labor time to help build or help get open the Idyllwild Pool. And it worked. We had about 100, a little less than 100 people that came out that day to help with the project. Since then, it's grown. We get about 120, 140 people now to help out. This year, we're doing it again to get that Moana Pool open, I mean Idyllwild, I said Moana, huh? Idyllwild Pool open. So, basically, last year, it brought in approximately 400 hours of volunteer time is what was given to the city of Reno last year by us helping out with that project. Sierra Nevada Masters donated the flowers that were put in the beds. We were able not only to do the pool deck, but we went out into the terrace park, the park next door to it, the rose garden. We cleaned up the whole entire area. So, I would like to thank city council and Parks, Public Works, Parks and Rec for all their help with this project. So, we're going to do it again this year. We'd love to have all the city council come out and help. We're hoping to grow this event even bigger. The reason we need to get this pool open is that we only have one competitive pool in town, and that is the Northwest Pool. So, by getting this, it takes that pressure off, so it is very important to the community. So, I appreciate it if you guys can come out and support this event. So, that's Saturday, May 31st. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chip Hobson.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Council, I'm Chip Hobson on behalf of the Board of Directors of Sierra Nevada Community Aquatics, and we're here today to lend our support to the staff recommendation to move forward with the plans to grant the contract to make the very much needed, not improvements, but just preservation of the Northwest Pool. As you know, we're working diligently to try to bring the area a new aquatic center and continue with those efforts, and are continuing to move forward with that effort. A secondary portion of our mission is to assure the sustainability of the existing facilities in town. As some of you will recall, and some of you may know, the 2008 study performed by the city of Reno looking at recreational opportunities indicated that we needed one new regional aquatic center, which would be the proposed center that we're trying to work on at Moana. But in addition to our existing aquatic facilities, the region needed another three to four aquatic centers similar to what we now have at Northwest. As was mentioned, Northwest is our sole reasonably-sized indoor year-round aquatic facility, and it's absolutely critical to all the programs from Learn to Swim, senior programs, programs for the disabled, our veterans in the community, that for many of them, an aquatic environment is the only opportunity they have to exercise and work on their rehabilitation and their movement. That same study looked at what were categorized as priority-one, critical and immediate needs for the recreational facilities in town, and the replacement of the roof and the preservation of the structure was one of those high-priority, immediate needs in 2008. Since then, portions of the roof have blown off. The eastern end of the building is literally held together, sandwiched by plywood that was put in place about five years ago as a stopgap measure. Still exists that way today. We just urge that you follow the staff's recommendation and move forward, and we're thrilled that that would assure the sustainability of that for the citizens of Reno for the next 30 years as the existing facility has lasted. Thank you for your time.
Chris Olberg.
Chris Olberg, lifelong residence. Unfortunately, our city has an epidemic, and it is very serious. We're all worried about the mussels at Lake Tahoe and the other lakes that are invading our city, our lakes. In this town, we have an epidemic of the boar beetle, and it is killing our forests. Unfortunately, the people that go out and cut the forest bring the boar beetle to our city. I have lost six 40-year-old trees. My 80-foot pine tree is under siege. Moana Nursery thinks they might be able to save it. They're not sure. And it started with my next-door neighbor. Went to my house, went to the house next door, went to the house behind it, went to the house across the street, and it is spreading like a fungus. We must stop firewood in this city. Three reasons: the environment, the air quality, and now the boar beetle. And if we do not start throwing some money at this, instead of the baseball team, start worrying about the boar beetle, there will be no trees left in this city in 10 years. And it is serious, serious, and you people should take a look at it and really take this serious unless you want your trees to die next. And what am I going to do? In 40 years, my trees will be back? I'm sorry, I'll be dead. Please, take this serious. No more firewood. Stop it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark Marquel.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and City Council, and Mr. Manager. If I was mayor, I'd do something about the fire department situation. I understand you are, but I wouldn't let it happen to the city. We need the fire department. My name is Mark Marquel, and my mission in life is to educate students in the community about what happens when someone gets in the car with a drunk driver. I'm reading from this because I suffer from traumatic brain injury and get off track. In the city of Reno, April 1st, April 29th, 2013, there were 50 DUI arrests, 19 crashes, and no fatalities. In the city of Reno, April 1st, April 29th, 2014, there were 46 arrests, 14 crashes, and no fatalities. In the city of Reno, in January 1st, April 29th, 2014, there were 152 DUI arrests, 42 crashes, no, 72 crashes, and no fatalities. So, we died, whatever. Through Mark's pad, people against drunk driving. I hope to prevent others from making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences that I have. Parents, don't drive drunk with their kids in the car. Kids, listen to your parents. They were young once, and listen to your teachers. They just want to make good choices of you. They're there to help you. I never listened to either one, and look what happened to me. My life is completely changed as a result of getting in the car with a drunk driver. Please don't end up like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very good. Billy Howard.
I'm Billy Howard, former chair of the Ward 2 South Neighborhood Advisory Board, with an update on the Puppy Mill Free Reno Initiative. Distinguished mayor, honorable council members, and staff, we're in the middle of Puppy Mill Awareness Week at UNR, an outreach and education component of our push for the ban of the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in retail stores in the cities of Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, and the state of Nevada, because national studies show that animals sold in retail stores are sourced by 10,000 puppy mills across the country. The events are co-presented by the Behavior Outreach Program of the Psychology Department of the University of Nevada Reno, and co-sponsored by the Joe Crowley Student Union and the Graduate Student Association. Our day-long information booth at UNR netted 512 signatures. Additionally, we were featured on Colo8 TV and KOH Radio, adding signatures to our online tally as well. At Earth Day, I was able to contact many more people for a tally this week of over 750 signatures. The total is now just under 7,500 people who support this ban, up about over 1,000 since the council last met two weeks ago. Today, I'm submitting a condensed version of the city of Chicago's resolution of the same ban we are asking for. Each of the whereas entries are quite pertinent to the Reno community as well. I hope you take a moment to look them over. I have to go get them printed, so I'll submit them in a bit. Whereas, pet stores selling live animals have traditionally been a sales outlet for young dogs, cats, and rabbits bred in puppy mills, kitten mills, and rabbit mills, both within the United States and abroad. According to the Humane Society of the United States, it is estimated that 10,000 puppy mills produce more than 2,400,000 puppies a year in the United States, and that most pet store puppies, kittens, and many pet store rabbits come from puppy mills, kitten mills, and rabbit mills respectively. When consumers buy puppies, kittens, and rabbits from a pet store, there is a strong likelihood that consumers are unknowingly supporting the puppy mill, kitten mill, or rabbit mill industry. Whereas, the documented abuses of puppy and kitten mills include overbreeding, inbreeding, minimal to nonexistent veterinary care, lack of adequate food, water, and shelter, lack of socialization, lack of adequate space, and the euthanization of unwanted animals. The inhumane conditions in puppy and kitten mill facilities lead to health and behavioral issues with animals, which many consumers are unaware of when purchasing animals from retailers due to both a lack of education-only issue and misleading tactics of retailers in some cases. These health and behavioral issues, which may not present themselves until years after the purchase of the animals, can impose exorbitant financial and emotional costs on consumers. There are many more, and I hope you have a chance to look them over. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sam DaNay.
Sam DaNay, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and the father of Reno's next mayor, a Marine Corps veteran. Nice chortle over there. A Marine Corps veteran. Sam, that's me. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation. Since my airline, Pan American, was blown out of business over Lockerbie by the terrorists, I have attended virtually every single meeting of the city council here and over at the old building. 98.7% of the meetings. As a matter of fact, ever since we started the meetings in this building here, I sat right in that chair of honor where that young man is sitting, and I'm glad he broke my streak. It was getting to be a little bit of pressure to me. You know, there's a young man in this community who set the national home run hitting, high school home run hitting, record 20 years ago. Then he went into professional baseball for 20 years, and yesterday, he announced his retirement. Here's what I'm going to do. The next mayor of Reno, Mr. DaNay, is going to recommend that the Reno Aces hire that young man for one game, maybe even more, for a last hurrah, and the next mayor, DaNay, is going to throw out the last pitch. As far as the fire department brouhaha goes, a lot of people are blaming these people up on the dais. They're not without sin, don't get me wrong, but the real culprit, the real culprit is the Reno Gazette newspaper. The Reno Gazette newspaper has been hiding Sams, my soothsaying and prophetic words and warnings for many, many, many years. If they had reported what I've been warning at these podiums for the last 20 years, we would not have these horrible pickles that we're in. You can see most of my comments on YouTube. And last but not least, I want to say a few words about the Reno Gazette's staged, rigged, contaminated, manipulated, orchestrated Reno Gazette happy pool, where they claim that the best way to find a mayor is to count how many Facebook friends he has. Think about it. How many Facebook friends you have? I've got 47,500. I guess I'm mayor right now. They also say that another way to calculate a mayor is who has the most campaign contribution bribes. I'm not taking any bribes, neither one is that the other DaNay, who's running for mayor. And last but not least, the Reno Gazette is going to have its own election, its own ballot. But guess what, ladies and gentlemen? Guess who's going to count the votes? The Reno Gazette. Yesterday, at that brouhaha that they called a debate, and by the way, having the Reno Gazette moderators is like having a second grader trying to fly a B-52. As a matter of fact, the second grader would probably do better. At any rate, they asked all of these questions. At any rate, they asked all of these questions about this and that and said, put your hand up for that, put your hand up for that. They even asked, even asked, is Mayor Kuscheil a good mayor? And I won't even tell you what the vote was on that one. At any rate, the one question they did not ask was, who on that dais up there of all you candidates, who has had 21,000 votes for mayor? Only one hand would go up, and that would be Denae. He was the challenger against the mighty Kuscheil in the last election.
Thank you very much. All right, I have no other public comment cards at this time. We'll go to the city manager's announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next week, we have two workshops scheduled. We actually have the Budget Workshop, which is, we've set aside May 6th and May 7th. We also have, on May 7th, we have scheduled a workshop regarding the future of medical marijuana establishments in the city of Reno. I've had some requests from council members to move the budget hearings to the 6th and just do it all on May 6th, so I'm currently working with, or 7th, sorry, May 7th, to have a combined workshop. We'll have the workshop on the medical marijuana as well as a budget workshop on May 7th. Also wanted to announce for the council that the city of Reno has joined numerous other cities and counties around the state in holding special events to celebrate Nevada's 150th birthday. An upcoming two-day City of Reno event scheduled for May 9th and 10th will highlight our city's rich history. This event is intended to commemorate and bring to life the events that occurred on May 9th, 1868. That is the day that the first public auction of lots in the city was held. The event festivities will be called the Biggest Little Birthday Party. You can visit reno.gov/NV150 for more information. It should also be noted that March 16th, 1903, marks the actual birthday for the incorporation of the city of Reno. And then finally, we have a winner in our video contest. The city of Reno held a video contest that challenged residents to depict how reno.gov is useful for getting information that helps with work, children, home life, recreational activities, and more. And we want to congratulate the contest winner, Cassandra Alderson-Hemsley. Cassandra's video is a creative look at how dog owners can use reno.gov to find dog-friendly parks. I would like to show the video now if we can.
I don't think you're going to. All right. All right, thank you for your report, Mr. Manager. At this time, we'll go to approval of the agenda before proclamations will be done, item C1, C2, C3. Presentations, I'm gonna move up the presentation, item D1, before the consent, before the proclamations are given, I'm gonna run item presentation, item D1, shooting it renown before the proclamations. Then we will do the proclamations and the presentations and orders after that. Any other changes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move up item J3, since there are a lot of people in this room waiting on that item, and I don't want them here all day.
Okay, then we'll move item J3.
Thank you.
Up after the consent agenda.
And, Mr. Mayor, the presenter for D2 recognized our long public comment, and he was on a tighter schedule than was anticipated, so he'll visit us another time. He had to leave today.
Okay. We're pulling that item. Item D2. Any other changes? Chair, entertain a motion. Second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the minutes for April 16, April, the Joint City Council Anti-Graffiti Task Force.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash dispersments, any? All right, motion to approve the cash dispersment? Have motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to item D1, Chief Pitts.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council, Steve Pitts and Tom Robinson. On behalf of the Reno Police Department, I want to thank you for taking a moment this afternoon to recognize those that will be decorating today and the victims of the renowned incident that occurred in December of last year. It's an honor and a privilege to recognize members of the Reno Police Department, which include many of our dispatchers from Communications and obviously our police officers, for their bravery and incredible teamwork, and to pay our respects to those victimized on Tuesday, December 17th, in 2013, when a lone gunman entered Urology, Nevada, armed with a long gun and 20 rounds of ammunition for that weapon, and a high-capacity semi-auto pistol with over 30 rounds of ammunition for that weapon. The gunman entered the offices for Urology, Nevada, and demanded all patients to leave the office, and then began systematically shooting two doctors and other individuals in the office place. The gunman shot and critically wounded Dr. La Genesse, and then shot and killed Dr. Goldoyen. He immediately went to the doors of an admin office and two exam rooms where people had barricaded, first shooting through an admin office door and then trying to force the doors to attack and kill other doctors and staff. Fortunately, communications personnel calmly and professionally initiated the deployment of Reno police officers who arrived on scene in less than one minute from the time they were dispatched. These officers immediately formed into small teams and flooded the entire building, all floors, obviously, announcing loudly, says the Reno Police Department, get down and stay down. Ladies and gentlemen, this tactical system is utilized so we can get between what we classify as cherished cargo, which is our citizens, those at risk that day, and the killer. And we know from research and law enforcement, when we go early, we go hard and fast, we save lives. As officers flooded the third floor, the gunman shot and killed himself immediately, terminating the threat. But our work was not done, for our men and women moved from the role of hunting the killer to life-saving efforts of those wounded, saving Dr. La Genesse, who is with us today and will speak in a moment, and also trying to work on the fatally wounded Dr. Goldoyen. The citations read today will share the stories of teamwork, bravery, and life-saving. And I will share with you this, we are blessed to get to the scene so quickly and for our men and women not to waste a second to get in. For deductive reasoning and the investigative follow-up, clearly determined, the gunman would have kept killing if he had time, but he heard us coming. Before we read the citations and express our appreciation and reflection on this event, please stand in a moment of silence for Dr. Goldoyen and his family and those victimized Thank you. For the presentations and reading the citations, Deputy Chief, Tom Robinson.
Good afternoon. I'm honored today to present you with these individuals who did work above and beyond what they expected on a normal everyday. On December 17th, 2013, at about 2:04 PM, a lone gunman entered an office on the third floor of a medical building located at 1500 East Second Street and began shooting at employees of the practice. The city of Reno Public Safety Dispatchers and Dispatch Supervisor answered emergency 911 calls, provided instruction to and gained valuable information from callers, coordinated radio traffic, and communicated essential updates to officers on scene, and coordinated the responses of the multitude of agencies and officers that responded to the scene. Because of their professionalism during this extreme event, Public Safety Dispatch Supervisor Susie Rogers and Public Safety Dispatchers Georgiana Bennett, Carrie Ayer, Mary Hughes, Becky Knapp, Kim Lewandowski, Kelly McKenna, and Donna Rogers are all awarded the Reno Police Department's Chief's Certificate of Commendation. I apologize.
Just a few more minutes.
Few more minutes. On December 17th, 2013, at about 2:04 PM, a lone gunman entered an office on the third floor of a medical office building located at 1500 East Second Street and began shooting at employees of the practice. The sergeants, officers, and detectives were some of the first to arrive. They immediately formulated emergency action teams, entered into the building, went floor to floor to seek out the suspect, took steps to render the scene safe, and assisted the people inside. The quick and decisive actions of these officers exemplifies the Reno Police Department's vision of being a model of policing excellence. Officer Norman Brady, Officer Brian Craig, Detective Jason Daniels, Officer Jerry Hallert, Officer Chris Johnson, Detective Ernest Casmire, Sergeant Roya Mason, Officer Daniel Miller, Sergeant Joe Robinson, Officer, my brother, by the way, Officer Eric Schleschner, Sergeant John Tarter, and Officer Philip Tuttle are all awarded the Reno Police Department's Chief Certificate of Commendation. On December 17th... I'm sorry, could you guys scoot it a little closer? I wanna get close with you guys. You got it upside down, chief. Yeah, it might not work. On December 17th, 2013, at about 2:04 PM, a lone gunman entered an office on the third floor of a medical office building located at 1500 East Second Street and began shooting at employees of the practice. Officer Ryan Connolly and Master Officer Reed Thomas were some of the first officers to arrive on scene. These two officers immediately entered the building, went to the third floor, and found a victim of a life-threatening gunshot wound. These two immediately applied life-saving measures and ultimately facilitated the transport of the injured person to a hospital, saving the victim's life. For these actions, Officer Ryan Connolly and Master Officer Reed Thomas are awarded the Reno Police Department Life Saving Award. And, Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to introduce Dr. Christine La Genesse.
Members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to thank someone for saving my life. It's not very many people who can say, "Thank you for saving my life," and that really is what these people did, all of them, but in particular Officer Reed, Reed Thomas and Officer Ryan Connolly. I want to thank everyone, actually, in the community, my partners, the people at my office, the renowned who took care of me, my family. Everyone has been instrumental in making it so that when you were talking about the victims of the shooting, I was going, oh, wait a minute, that's not me. I'm not a victim, I'm a survivor. And I owe it to all of these people. Thank you.
And, Your Honor, if you could indulge me one last time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Hall from Urology, Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished council members. It is my great privilege and honor to be able to present, as the immediate past president of Nevada State Medical Association, the President's Award to Chief Pitts for the entire team that day. On December 17th, 2013, chaos crept into our life. And what defines a team is not necessarily doing your job, but also how you do your job. And I have to tell you, from the very moment, the expertise was there, but what was overwhelmingly as a victim present is compassion. And I have to tell you, from being able to say goodbye to my good friend, Dr. Goldoyen, from that moment and moving to this very day, the compassion the department has given from the first responders to the detectives, to the social workers following up for us victims, to help us heal and get back to the job of healing, which is what we do, is my great honor to present the President's Award to Chief Pitts, which reads, Nevada State Medical Association President's Award for Outstanding Acts of Heroism and Compassion to Organize Medicine in Nevada, presented Reno Police Department, April 2014. Thank you so very much. God bless you.
Just a few closing comments, Your Honor, and we'll get out of here. What I'd like the families to do is come up here, and anybody in the medical profession that came today, I know there's a couple of doctors that didn't actually work for Norada Urology, but they're here, would they please come up with this group and stand over there with the families? Kind of in closing, just to take a quote and put it in perspective, Von Clausewitz obviously did similar work on combat, and you may say, you know, why would you share something from Von Clausewitz? Well, because I have to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, these people that day experienced combat in the office of Norada Urology. It changed their lives, the gunshots, the cries for help, the different smells of gunpowder in the air, and the bloodshed of their coworkers. They will be different because of that. Von Clausewitz wrote, "The moral elements are among the most important in a combat situation. Unfortunately, they cannot yield, nor should they ever, to the critic or the academic. For them, all things must be measured and proven." The real effects of combat are much more oriented around the physical and emotional, the psychological, and the most important factor, which is the whole, the organic whole. What Clausewitz may be sharing with us may sound simple, ladies and gentlemen, but it's actually hard to do. The moral elements are the unmeasurable value we place on life, liberty, and freedom that all of our citizens and visitors deserve. He also did a masterful job, in my estimation, of dismissing the critic and comparing to those who are in the arena of life, and remind us that the greatest value is found in those who do it, not those who talk about it. The emotional and psychological factors that impact the whole organically, as he finishes, really is our community, what we do for them, what they... "really is our community, what we do for them, what they do for us, how we serve, and in storms in life, how we do it together. The Reno Police Department, the Reno Fire Department, Public Safety, and General never comes as conquerors, but we come as guardians of truth in protecting, as I said, the freedoms and liberties all our citizens deserve. These secrets are held close in times of trial and conflict, and those who experience them together shall forever have a special bond, as this group of people have." And what I'd like to do is, the reason I ask the families and other citizens to come up here is because you see big blue Reno PD standing with citizens. That is the Reno Police Department. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Hopefully we'll see you guys again.
Now the couple of certificates got passed, so get everybody over.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you, man. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, you're playing.
All right, perfect. About 10 minutes.
When you get her? No, when you get her?
Do you want to cap sign?
Yeah. Yeah, go over to the left.
Susie, take everybody over to the left. To the left, man. Get everybody over there.
Hey, Jerry? Thanks for taking care of me. Go to the left.
Good.
Your Honor and council, thank you very much.
Back to your normal squad? Yeah? How much you pay him off? No, good.
All right, Jerry?
Yeah? We're coming. Thank you.
Do you want to give a sign?
Yeah. Yeah, go over to the left.
Susie, take everybody over to the left. To the left, man. Get everybody over there.
Your Honor and council, thank you very much.
Back to your normal squad? Yeah? How much you pay him off? No, good.
All right, Jerry?
Yeah?
We're coming.
Thank you.
Sit down.
Are you doing the presentation for the senior J three or the proclamation?
Yes, I did. Who's gone? Do you have your dog show ready?
Well, you had the film you wanted. Don't be telling me you didn't have a dog show.
I don't know.
Is it working?
No?
Well, let's do, we'll go to proclamations.
Send you a link.
Adam C one, Peace Officer Memorial Week, Chief Pitts. Where does, who's excuse him?
Yeah, you want to jump in?
Hey, Chief Pitts, you can hear the microphone. Come on in. Thank you. Now we'll jump down to one of my favorite, Old Americans Month. Who's doing that proclamation? All right.
I'm not sure why the mayor's not doing this one. He best fits the profile.
Don't be trying to pull rank on me.
That's what happens when you give me the mic.
Yes, you are.
He's not smiling.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm excited to get to be able to read this proclamation for Older Americans Month. Obviously, the seniors in our community are an ever-growing and critical part of the success of the biggest little city, and there's some pretty exciting stuff going on with the RTC and some Stuff-a-Bus concepts that we're going to roll out during Older Americans Month to help with serving some of the seniors in our community and meeting on an ongoing basis some of their continual needs. So I'll let you guys speak more to some of those things, but let me read the proclamation. Whereas there are over 80,000 citizens aged 60 and older in Reno and the Washoe County area, and whereas 2014 is the 50th anniversary of state and local celebrations of Older Americans Month, and whereas the City of Reno is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in Reno and Washoe County area have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich citizens, young and old, by emphasizing, excuse me, by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, and providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, as in falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, fire burns, and helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now therefore, I, Neoma Jordan, on behalf of Robert A. Koschel, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Older Americans Month.
Thank you very much. Julie Conway, for the record, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department, our staff, who is here, who manages the program, and also we have, and I'll turn it over to Donna Clontz, the Chair of our commission, but I'm also very pleased that we work in concert with the county. And today we have Grady Tarbutton from the Senior Services Division of the Washoe County, and we work in concert with them so that we leverage our resources, and thank you for being here today. The county has done a similar proclamation in supporting our senior adults, and so thank you very much for this, and we are very excited about the upcoming month of May. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Donna Clontz to say a few words about the exciting activities that are happening in May.
Thank you, Julie. Good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor, council and city manager. There are some Older American Month booklets that the clerk has that she'll be distributing to you all. They are available to our seniors all over Washoe County, at our libraries, at the senior centers, and at places where seniors live and congregate. So we're asking all of the folks who are out watching us today to pick one up and join us in one of the 60 or more activities that are going on throughout the month of May. Opening ceremonies is tomorrow morning, and we have a flyer, I think we could probably turn on the overhead and see that, at the Washoe County Senior Center, starting at 9:00 in the morning and going through lunch, there will be 35-plus booths and information, an information fair for seniors that will be at the senior center. And then throughout the month of May, there will be a lot of opportunities for seniors to engage with city staff, county staff, providers of senior services throughout the, throughout Washoe County. We'll have chances for seniors to talk to the folks that are running for office about senior issues. We'll have chances for folks to talk to many of you sitting on council right now about your efforts to work on senior services. We thank you all so much for the support that each of you has been giving to our seniors in our community for all these years, and look forward to working together with you to continue that and even grow it. As you probably all know, one in four people in our area is 55 or older, and we want them all to stay healthy and active as long as they can. So thank you so much for the proclamation today.
Thank you.
Sorry, I need to introduce Connie McMullin, too, who is Chair of the Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Board, here with Grady from the county. And we all are partners together in working on senior issues as volunteers in our community. Thanks.
Thank all of you. Yes, come on up.
I would just like to say that in 1995, I was recruited by some people from the City of Reno Park and Recreation Department to start some senior programs in the city, and look at what we have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Grady Tarbutton, Washoe County Senior Services, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here. This is a great partnership between the city and the county. One of the reasons the county is here is not just the activities that go on, it's to make the community aware that we provide social services to every senior that lives in Washoe County. He had public testimony earlier about a gentleman who was having difficulty caring for his wife. That gentleman needs to come to Washoe County Senior Services and ask for our assistance. We're very pleased to be here. I want to thank Daryl for all his hard work. He has reminded me at least five times that this is a 50th year celebration. I think Daryl was there for the first one. And we're looking forward to 50 more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So thank you again. I would be remiss in not introducing Alan Roney, who is our Recreation Supervisor, who actually is additional boots on the ground, as well as Daryl, in making this happen, working with the county. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Also...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We have some absolutely incredible volunteers in our city, and I think one of the standout ones is right there, Donna Clontz, so much so that she and the Vice Chair of our Senior Advisory Committee were willing to pay out of their own pockets to go to a conference that was scheduled to be held down in Southern California, how to be better volunteers and work with their communities. They were going to pay out of their own pockets to go. Unfortunately, the conference was canceled, but they had their airfare hotel, you name it, all lined up to do us even a better job.
Also, I'd like to say, I'm so fortunate to work with you guys. I've been so blessed, and I can't tell you how much I've learned from all your expertise. I honestly cringe at the thought, if we didn't have you, and what the seniors would do without you in our city. Grady, I just, I have so much respect for you, and Donna, I love you so much. You're great. And Connie's been amazing, and Daryl, and Julie, I mean, you guys are incredible. I can't even just begin to tell you, thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to Adam C three.
We still have...
May 2014 National Drug Court Month. Judge Holmes. And you're doing it?
No. We still have the chief is back. The chief is back.
He doesn't, I mean, he runs that force, but I'm running this meeting. I don't care what the chief says.
He has a lot.
He wins.
So I have the privilege and honor here to do a proclamation here on behalf of accepting the National Drug Court Month, is our Judge Nash Holmes. Whereas Drug Court is an innovative and humane justice program that emphasizes the treatment of substance abusers to enable them to achieve recovery, take responsibility for their actions, and become productive in the communities. And whereas Drug Courts began in America in 1989, this marks the 25th year of their operation, becoming the most successful justice intervention in our nation's history. Whereas there are now 2,840 Drug Courts and 1,057 other problem-solving courts operating in criminal, family, juvenile, mental health, and veterans' courts in America. And whereas Nevada always a pioneering state, was one of the first to create and use Drug Courts, and now has 47 Drug Courts reaching all sectors of Nevada's population. And whereas Drug Courts are a good investment that saves up to $27 in taxpayer-paid costs later for $1 invested in treatment now, and whereas a six-month jail sentence costs our taxpayers $19,440, while a full year of treatment and court supervision can be provided for less than 20% of that cost. And whereas research has shown that 75% of Drug Court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs again. And whereas extraordinary expansion of Drug Courts has helped curb 40 years of escalating prison costs and proved that community-based treatment is more cost-effective and successful than incarceration, and whereas the month of May has been designated as the annual recognition of the significant contributions of Drug Courts that save lives, reunite families, reduce substance abuse, and reduce recidivism while saving resources. Now therefore, I, Oscar Delgado, on behalf of the City Councilor and Mayor Bob Kinshew, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Drug Court Month.
Mr. Mayor and council members, on behalf of the Reno Municipal Court, and with me is our Court Administrator, Cassie Jackson, we want to thank you for doing this and also for allowing us to use your chambers Monday night for our first public graduation. We'll be graduating 29 people who have done a year or more in treatment court and regained their lives and their families and are now productive members of society, and we are so proud of them, and we're very proud of you, and we thank you for this honor.
Judge, we really appreciate everything that you've done and what the court's done because the program you have got has really helped a lot of people, and I know firsthand. Thank you.
We know we're doing good work here. We love it.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Adra, we will go to Chief Pitts.
Peace Off...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an appropriate day, given the recognitions that we just had earlier today to be recognizing our peace officers. Whereas the promise of all of the promises that America offers, none is more precious or even more elusive than the right to be free from crime and violence, and where the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk in preserving our freedom and security. And during the week of May 12th, 2014, National Police Officer Week is observed throughout the nation in order to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment to our nation's peace officers. And whereas President John F. Kennedy in 1963 signed the Congressional Resolution that each year makes May 15 Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week of each year during which May 15 occurs as Peace, as Police Week, to commemorate those noble officers who have tragically lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas we take this opportunity to pause and remember our Reno police officers who have died in the line of duty while serving this community, including Patrolman Harry P. Brown in 1905, Patrolman Charles A. Brown in 1907, Patrolman Wilson Figot in 1927, Officer Ross Peterson in 1931, Captain Leroy J. Geach in 1947, Sergeant Allen A. Glass in 1947, Auxiliary Officer Michael J. Mills in 1969, Officer James D. Hoff in 1979, Officer Keith T. Hashimoto in 1996, Officer John C. Bohatch in 2001, and Officer Michael Schofield in 2002. And whereas there were 111 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2013, and an average of over 15,000 are injured each year, and the Reno Police Department's vision is to be totally integrated into the community and viewed as a model of policing excellence. And whereas these special observances provide all Nevadans with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving our public safety. Now therefore, I, Sharon Zadra, and this City Council, with our Robert A. Koschel, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12, 2014, as Peace Officer Memorial Week. In and for the City of Reno, Nevada, encouraging all citizens to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety, and most of all, to take the opportunity to express appreciation to those who daily dedicate themselves to making Nevada a safer place in which to live.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an appropriate day, given the recognitions that we just had earlier today to be recognizing our peace officers. Whereas the promise of all of the promises that America offers, none is more precious or even more elusive than the right to be free from crime and violence. And where the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk in preserving our freedom and security. And during the week of May 12, 2014, National Police Officer Week is observed throughout the nation in order to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment to our nation's peace officers. And whereas President John F. Kennedy in 1963 signed the congressional resolution that each year makes May 15 Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week of each year during which May 15 occurs as Peace, as Police Week, to commemorate those noble officers who have tragically lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas we take this opportunity to pause and remember our Reno police officers who have died in the line of duty while serving this community, including Patrolman Harry P. Brown in 1905, Patrolman Charles A. Brown in 1907, Patrolman Wilson Figot in 1927, Officer Ross Peterson in 1931, Captain Leroy J. Geach in 1947, Sergeant Allen A. Glass in 1947, Auxiliary Officer Michael J. Mills in 1969, Officer James D. Hoff in 1979, Officer Keith T. Hashimoto in 1996, Officer John C. Bohatch in 2001, and Officer Michael Schofield in 2002. And whereas there were 111 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2013, and an average of over 15,000 are injured each year, and the Reno Police Department's vision is to be totally integrated into the community and viewed as a model of policing excellence. And whereas these special observances provide all Nevadans with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving our public safety. Now, therefore, I, Sharon Zadra, and this city council, with our Robert A. Keschel, senior mayor of the city of Reno, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12, 2014, as Peace Officer Memorial Week. In and for the city of Reno, Nevada, encouraging all citizens to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety, and most of all, to take the opportunity to express appreciation to those who daily dedicate themselves to making Nevada a safer place in which to live.[598.51][598.51](APPLAUSE).
Just briefly, on behalf of the men and women in law enforcement in this region, I want to say it's an honor for this governing body to take a minute to remember not just our men and women we've lost, but this is a reflection of you remembering all the men and women lost, as Ms. Zadra said, about 111 last year. And so, back to Von Klosowitz. It's about the moral elements for us, and we will risk everything to support those. So, God bless you, and thank you very much.[634.04][634.04](APPLAUSE).
Adam J. Three. We'll move Adam J. Three up before the consent. Do you have any comment cards? Okay, bring him on.
Mr. Mayor, that's Resolution Number 7965, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, finding it necessary to reduce staff of the Reno Fire Department and authorizing the city manager to take all necessary and appropriate actions to implement this resolution for fiscal year 1314.
All right, we have several people. We have 26 people that do not wish to speak, and they are in opposition, opposed to firefighters' layoff. I believe the city should uphold their commitment to a high level of public safety. And we have six people that wish to speak. All right. Buckingham, Maria Buckingham?
Maya Buchanan?
Buchanan, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize.[719.32][719.32](LAUGHTER).
Kind of tall. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me an audience. I'm here actually on my lunch break. I also work with seniors. Kind of fun to be here when I got to hear that proclamation. But I am here actually today because I found myself sick to my stomach and really worried last week on the news when this came to light, that we would be having a reduction in our emergency services through the Reno Fire Department. My family and I, very recently, as in two weeks ago, finished our home being built in Somerset, the community of Somerset. And one of the things that made me really comfortable about building a new home out in the foothills was the proximity to two fire stations. That is one of my concerns, of course, and that's not only for the, my home, but also for my community and for my fellow folks out there in the foothills. Emergency services are a huge part of my life, and it's twofold. I work with seniors as a profession, and the fire department are always the first on the scene when I need them, and I need them on a nightly basis with my job. They are always there, just like that. And when you're dealing with someone who's had a stroke, a heart attack, anything, a choking hazard, anything of that nature, it's not minutes that count, it's seconds. And every time our community decides, or when you guys decide to scale back the firefighters, that reduces the amount of time that my seniors can get critical help. Our EMS services are great, REMZA is great, but they are not the first ones there. I'll tell you from my experience of working with seniors for 15-plus years, it is critical that we have properly-staffed and ample fire stations. My other concern is, as a mother, I have a two- and a four-year-old, and I also take care of my disabled mother, all of which live in my new home that we just built. I have a son who is two and a half, who is the light of my life, who is special needs. He has a rare genetic disorder called Williams syndrome. He has heart disease and is prone to choking. So, you can imagine my concern at thinking that if my disabled mother or my disabled son were in need to call 911, that now this may put our lives in jeopardy. Because the longer it takes to come from a different fire station, if one is closed down near my home, the amount of time that it's going to take for another fire station or another crew who may already be on the scene somewhere else and are already understaffed, that concerns me deeply. And it makes me feel, I've recently gone back to work after being a stay-at-home mom, and that makes me scared to go to work because I feel like, I'm trained, I'm a first responder. I feel like I don't want to now leave my kids at home with my mother who's disabled. She's the one who looks after my two little ones, who are two and four. And so, I think in concern for my seniors, because that's the population I serve in my career, which I've been passionate about since I was 20 years old, and my family, as well as disabled people and people who are in need of immediate services more often than others. And so, I'm asking you to please, please reconsider and staff appropriately our fire stations, our police stations, because I value that over, I enjoy things like ballparks, too. I enjoy things like shopping centers, too.
Thank you very much.
But they're not as important as our firemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Eastman.
My name is Jason Eastman, and I am one of the Reno firefighters that's going to be laid off, once again, for the second time. And I just want to express my dislike at losing my job, but I'm also extremely concerned for the community that I moved here to serve in 2007, long before we picked up a safer grant, long before we applied for any of them. I was hired to serve this community, and I love this community, and I'm extremely concerned about the direction that this council can potentially take and put more of this community at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mouselli and Mike Pilcher.
I'm Jennifer Mouselli. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the wife of one of the firefighters who is at risk, and I started a petition online to ask our city council to please reconsider these layoffs, find another way to keep these departments fully staffed so we don't have to lose one single firefighter or close any stations. I'm very proud to say that it took two weeks, and we reached our goal this morning of 5,000 signatures. So, it's, I know it's just me standing up here, but I'd like you to envision 4,999 other people standing strong with me, asking you to please keep our community safe, keep our fire stations staffed, and keep our firefighters employed. Thank you.
Thank you.[1031.41][1031.41](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor and council, Mike Pilcher with Reno Firefighters. I would just like you to not take lightly what just happened. This young lady brought you 5,000 voters. Picture 5,000 of your friends reaching out to you saying, "I need help. I need to meet with you. I have a serious issue." 5,000 business owners that have serious requests the next day, or 5,000 children that are asking you for a glass of milk. Don't take this lightly. This is a significant portion of the population in a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth Williams.
Good morning, council members. My name is Seth Williams. First, I'd like to say thanks for you guys getting together and working on our strategic plan you presented to the city. We've got it in writing that one of your number-one priorities is public safety, and we really appreciate that. And what I want to point out today is how important it is not to lose these 35 firefighters. But if you look right now, I mean, right now, today, Station 7 at Skyline, it's closed. We say browned out, but it's not a different color. If you go knock on the door, if you call 911, nobody's responding out of that station. Right now, today, Somerset is closed. 35 guys, that pretty equally, the math is easy. It's three more fire stations. So, I mean, it's a sunny day, but that's all that's unique about today. School's in session, there's no skiing, there's no hunting, there's not a lot of things, reasons why to take vacation. And right now, if one guy wasn't ordered to stay at work after, instead of going home this morning, we'd have another apparatus shut down. That's how understaffed we are today. This same scenario 60 days from now means three more stations shut down, or hundreds and hundreds of dollars in overtime. So, you know, where is the better cost savings? So, what I'm asking you, and in J. Three, it says that the city manager has the option to explore all options, including layoffs. Well, I implore you to explore all options. Give that document that you guys created saying emergency services are one of our number-one priorities, give that value, more than ink on paper, and reallocate funds in the city. Do whatever it takes to make sure these guys don't leave. Because today, we're short-staffed. 35 less means, you know, who, which one of you, or the fire chief, gets to choose which fire station's a shutdown? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.[1175.65][1175.65](APPLAUSE). Dennis Jacobson.
Dennis, for the record, Dennis Jacobson, Reno Firefighters Association president. Sorry to be standing here again, and I'm certain that you folks are sorry that we're dealing with this subject again. But a few things need to be addressed, things need to be clarified, and I would be amiss if I didn't do that. Certainly, you're going to hear the opinions that we need to revisit our budget in general. The process is ongoing, as it should be, and it, you'll be presented with a final budget, I believe, later next month. Unfortunately, 35 of your employees who have already left the employment of this city and come back once are faced with that again. Number of the questions that I've had from not only city staff, but from some of the media that have been calling, is, well, if City of Reno has plans A, B, what have you, what are the firefighters' plans? What have they done? And although I've answered that, and I've got to answer it here again, I find it very disturbing that even during the reception, you're still receiving credits from these firemen, credits from this association with respect to concessions, and folks working double and triple shifts to keep stations open, and not a single hour of overtime money's being spent. They're doing it through their own ambitions and trading, and yet, we don't acknowledge that. In fact, the acknowledgement last year was, with all the savings and the overtime, I believe the term is, the chief's budget was swept of some money that was saved. And this year, we've upped the ante, and instead of the thankful, of saving the time and the money, they're getting apparently layoff slips. As I said before, and if you've heard from Seth, we understand the process is ongoing. We do ask that until the process is finalized, and I understand there's even more budget meetings scheduled for tomorrow, that although these folks are on the bubble, and I cannot imagine what they're going through, I have now been on that position, no less twice. And it's hard enough for them and their families. But until it's absolutely necessary, and if you choose today that it absolutely is, so be it, until it's absolutely necessary, table J. Three until such time that the city staff and city council are on agreement that there's absolutely no other way to find funds. And that is my request for you today on behalf of 250 of your employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunay. Mr. Dunay.
Sam Dunay, the Encyclopedia Reno Government and the father of Reno's next mayor. We have what looks like a relatively innocuous resolution up there to the people who are not following all of this. It just says, "A resolution finding it necessary to reduce staff at the Reno Fire Department." I mean, maybe they're going to get rid of a, you know, reduce a secretary or a clerk or something like that. No, they're going to obliterate, eradicate 35 firemen and women from the fire department. That's what the resolution says. The typical person out there may not even know that that's what it's about. I have to remind you over and over again that government was created to protect the people. Government was created to protect the people, and that means the fire people and the police are number one. Anything else is secondary. I'm not saying all these other things are not important, but the concept of spending $50 million plus, plus, plus to buy this building back when Sam warned you not to do it, and I'm juxtaposing this against this blunder to have to get rid of these hard-working, and some of the best firefighters in all of America. They've saved hundreds and hundreds of homes around here. They haven't just been sitting around. They have performed miracles. Excuse me, I consider it a miracle what they did over at Colin Ranch and that other big fire. At any rate, and by the way, that young lady came up here with 5,000, signatures of 5,000 voters, and I'm betting you my freight-old $100 bill, actually, it's a new one now, I'm betting my freight-old $100 bill that 99% of those 5,000 voters that she brought up here are going to vote for Dunay, for the next mayor, because Dunay has been protecting and trying to protect the firefighters. And you can see all of my comments and reports and warnings on YouTube, most of them anyway. And I'm not really even blaming these people up here, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not blaming them. The real culprit is the Reno Gazette and much of the rest of the media who have refused to report any of Sam's warnings. If they had been reporting my warnings about even buying this building, we'd have $50 million in our coffers, we'd be still over there at a perfectly good building that used to be the City Hall building. Instead, we've got all of this money going down the drain. Another $4 million was just spent to pay off the latest mortgage on it. You call it a bond. Just money that went down the drain, and you know I, you know how I hate to say, I hate to say, "I told you so," but I'm not telling you, "I told you so." I'm telling the media, "I told you so," over and over again. Why is it Sam Dunay should be the go-to guy? I should be the go-to guy. I do all this philanthropically only because I want things to be better. I don't get anything for any of this. Matter of fact, I get some grief from the bureaucrats now and then. But the average citizen out on the street, 90% of Reno, they love Sam. You've got to do something, and if I were you, I would, first of all, take a 25% pay cut right now, at least to show, show some support for this horrible vote you're going to be taking.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment cards? I have no others, or bring it back to the council. Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify some things that I've been hearing out there is that we weren't planning for this, we weren't prepared, and that's all wrong. And two years ago, when we accepted the safer grant, I said then, alls we were doing was buying time. And I didn't support the firefighter's contract two years ago because I didn't think it went far enough, and because the concessions that they gave two years ago expire this June. So, whatever the concessions that they gave up-
That's not true. That's not true. That's not true. Okay.
And now, we're in negotiations again, and it's in your hands. It's in your hands now. I'm looking at everyone's, every firefighter that's in IAFF's pay right now, and the average pay for the firefighters in this city is $129,320. And I'm looking at, and I'm looking at pay of $185,000, $183,000, $188,000, $199,000, $197,000, $183,000, across the board. This is in your hands. We're in negotiations. If you want us to save those 35 firefighters, help us. Everyone in this room knows the biggest challenge we face moving forward as a city is our labor contracts. That's why we're at where we are today. If you want to save them, help us.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized, please?
Yes, you can.
Question for Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, with this reduction in force, will the citizens of Reno be safe?
That's a difficult question. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, I can tell you this, that we will be operating 11 stations, two truck companies. Response times in certain areas will increase. We won't have our two rescue apparatus, our two-man rescue apparatus. In Councilmember Jordan's district, Somerset, that station will be closed. The station on Skyline will be closed. Station on North Virginia will be closed. Those districts are being covered by other stations. Those stations typically add anywhere from two to four minutes from their response times into those areas. Will they be safe? I believe they will. Will this be a challenge for our organization? Absolutely. We, I believe we will step up, and we will meet that challenge. But this is not an easy time. This is not, by any stretch of the imagination, and it will be a difficult time for our organization.
Okay, thank you for that. If we go ahead with this, are you prepared to come back at our next meeting and explain to us a more detailed operational, you know, approach that you're going to use so that we can respond to people and let them know where these challenging areas are? And furthermore, I struggle with a couple issues. Last year, we approved a community up in the north, the North Valleys. The developer's ready to build a fire station for us. There's a subdivision coming over in the Verde area, looking for an increase in 300 residential units. And I understand your organization is recommending that that should be approved. Are you going to have trouble serving these new outlying areas?
In one particular area in the Cold Springs, we are, we are requesting and requiring the developer to build a road that will connect that station, the Sted station, to that area that will allow us to service that area. The area that is in the Verde area is, it's proximal to Boomtown area, so we currently serve that area. Again, you know, that's not a station that will, is scheduled to be browned out, that's Station 11 in Mayan, and that will be servicing that area. The station in Cold Springs will be servicing the area, I'm sorry, the station, Sted, will be servicing the area in Cold Springs, so, and that station will not be closed.
So, are we moving into a day where the citizens of Reno really have different expectations and service levels for fire response? The woman who spoke here today and built her house out in Somerset, is she in a more vulnerable situation than, say, old Southwest residents, and can expect a different level of service going forward? Whereas previously, we've been pretty consistent with our- pretty consistent with our service levels across our jurisdiction?
Well, the closing of, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, the closing of the Somerset station is not something new. That station is, has been closed because of its location and its call volume, typically a hundred-and-fifty calls a year. Do I like closing stations? No. Is that, that station, does it warrant a full-time crew, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five? That's, that's a, that's a point of discussion. Now, do we offer alternate levels of service to our citizens? We try to deliver the exact same level of service to all of our community with the time and the parameters that we've established. Again, is it going to be an easy thing for our organization? No. Is it gonna be a challenge? Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have a follow-up question for Mr. Manager. Mr. Manager, in our budget that we're in a proposed and mid-process through, we're proposing to absorb into the city budget, is it fourteen new firefighters this year?
Councilwoman Breckus, it's fifteen, and it's retaining fifteen of the fifty that were on the SAFER grant.
Okay. The budget draft also involves bringing on and sending through the academy for new law enforcement in the police department, is bringing on those positions a higher public safety priority than preserving, say, five, six, seven of these firefighters who are here today and won't have to go through academy?
The, the four positions that you're referring to in the Reno Police Department are positions that exist currently. They are not new positions. And I think when you look at the history, I mean, what we're talking about here is, is how do you prioritize the funds, right? I mean, because as a council, you have police, you have fire, you have Parks and Rec. When you look at the history of where this organization has come, and if you go back to nineteen-ninety-nine, pre-consolidation, we've had a fifty percent increase in general fund expenditures for fire. Over that same period of time, we've had a twenty-nine percent increase in police over that same period of time. So, when you're looking at priorities and you're trying to decide where to allocate the resources, we think what we've presented is the best allocation of resources.
Okay, so I'll take that, then, that you believe, and these positions do not, they're frozen. They've been frozen, and, and we're upping the police budget with four positions, and I take from that discussion that that's a higher public safety priority than preserving five, six, seven of these fire positions, and I accept that as your answer. I guess, to my colleagues, one thing that I see across the landscape here is really having a hard time understanding the operational nuances of both departments. I've talked a lot about seeing the City of Sparks that did an operational analysis of their police department last year that said, "Don't need any more officers, because all the bad guys are over here in Reno. You need an evidence technician and some shift changes." It's been a long time since our city has done that sort of analysis of our two big departments, which take up about sixty-five percent of our budget, sixty percent of our budget. I really hope that this year, whatever action we take today, that we can start to look and understand a little bit more to set the priorities and know what our staffing levels would be.
Okay. Ms. Shivi, and then the new, and the new.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to say, I don't think that you can put a price on a life. And I also think we have to be careful about quid pro quo here. I wanna remind this council, and this is very important to me, that we did do a strategic plan, and we did say that public safety was first. And I know for a fact that we have not prioritized certain things that I feel that we should not be subsidizing. So I really want all of you guys to think about that. Not only that, what really concerns me, and, and I think it's a matter of not if, but when, the last three winters were so dry, and I truly, I'm very, very concerned of what's ahead. So, when, when we're talking about this today, I think we absolutely need to either have more discussion on how we save all thirty-five, because I think it's coming down to prioritizing. And I will tell you, because I'm knocking on doors every single day, people are so concerned about this issue, and rightfully so.
Ms. Jordan?
Chief, I have a couple, I have a couple questions. Chief, do you have, within your fire department, mixed staffing availability?
The only option we currently have is to utilize a two-person rescue queue, rescue crew on a two, four, I'm sorry, it's a modified pickup truck that carries specialized medical and extrication equipment. We utilize that in conjunction with other apparatus. So, we take that two-person rescue crew as an example, and we park it at Station One, which is our busiest station to the tune of six thousand calls a year, and they respond in lieu of the hook and ladder, Mr. Mayor, to offset the demand at that particular station.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my question is this. Do you have the full ability right now, under the current contractual obligations, to staff based upon station location, call volume, and call type? Meaning, do you right now have the availability to put a two-person crew at the Somerset station?
I would have to sit with the labor group and negotiate and discuss and address safety concerns relative to staffing that particular model.
So right now, you don't, because of the contractual restrictions?
I have the ability. However, there's a requirement for the chief to sit with the labor group and make sure that safety concerns are addressed prior to implementing such a plan.
And, and we've tried that, correct?
We've had some discussions, correct.
And got nowhere, correct?
We met twice, I'm sorry, we met once, and we had a significant discussion regarding some of the safety concerns that the labor group had.
Let me ask another question, just to follow up on that, if you don't mind. Would it be possible for us to contract with RMSA to provide that service?
I reached out to RMSA with respect to having an ambulance placed in the Somerset area, and the, the call volume wouldn't warrant a permanently staffed or permanently stationed medical unit.
No, I'm saying contract for that rescue unit with RMSA.
No, sir, we do not.
And have them stationed, and why?
I believe it's an exclusive right to serve language in the labor contract.
But we could have a medical unit staffed in our, in our stations, a two-person medical unit, staffed in our stations, ready to go, contract that with RMSA?
I don't believe we can do that, sir.
They could be, you're saying they could be parked out on the street, and it's okay?
Well, they, they park out and they move their apparatus as they see fit.
I'm saying if we contract with them, though.
I guess we would have to have that discussion with, with the RMSA folks.
Didn't Richard West only have a two-man crew?
I'm sorry?
Didn't Richard West only have a two-man crew?
Yes.
Okay.
That's because the county was responding. To finish my, to finish my point, so Somerset, Station Nineteen, I know the call volume in twenty thirteen, I believe it was a hundred-and-forty-eight calls for service, I believe.
Hundred-and-fifty-four.
Hundred-and-fifty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
And how many of those were for fire?
I believe we had, I'm gonna say, three, maybe, maybe six. I've gotta look at my statistics, but it's disproportionately number of EMS calls.
Okay, and that's, and that's in a senior community?
Correct.
Where obviously the call volume for, for that would be higher for that. What is the average call split for fire versus medical?
Rule of thumb, across the United States and in this community, anywhere from eighty to eighty-five percent of our calls are medical, and the remainder are fires, hazardous materials, rescues, false alarms, that type of thing. So typically, it's an eighty-twenty split.
Okay. Last question. Is there, in looking at the numbers of the division chiefs, the battalion chiefs, and the captains, we have forty-two captains, six battalion chiefs, and four division chiefs. Seems like we're a little top-heavy. And is there an opportunity, particularly since the, the pay is about a two-to-one with regards to their pay versus a line fireman? Is there an opportunity where we could look at those positions and potentially save some of these positions?
Currently, we are in negotiations with both labor groups, and I, I think I need to be careful because that is a negotiation...
Yes.
...topic. So, I'm not sure I can speak to that.
Chief, let me, let me help answer that question, Councilwoman. Our labor agreement with RFDAA requires that we have four division chiefs and six battalion chiefs. So if we wanted to reduce the number of division chiefs or battalion chiefs, that is something that we have to negotiate with, with the labor organization. It's not something that we can just unilaterally make that change.
That's correct.
Well, so what I'm hearing is restrictions in the contracts are not allowing us to do a lot of things we would certainly like to do.
I am bound by the, the terms of the contract, correct.
We're bound by many things, by the terms of those contracts. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Doggato?
Chief, for historical context, the original SAFER grant, we received that, and due to layoffs a few years back, what was the, how many firefighters did we have on the SAFER grant back then?
Originally, we applied for ten positions, and I, this was about four and a half years ago.
Okay.
That was followed up with, I believe, the fifty?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, which brought the total to seventy-four. Through attrition, we, you know, we attritioned out fourteen positions, which brought us down to the fifty that we were looking at, at this particular grant application period. So, we went from a dependency of technically seventy-four positions, sixty-four positions, down to fifty. Once we were notified that we did not get the grant, we looked internally where we could save funds to try and save as many positions as we could. So, and we were able to identify funds, and some of those funds were one-time funds, to, to save fifteen positions. And we continue to look at other alternatives, as we speak, in offsetting that number.
So that first year was back in two thousand, the first time we received a grant for the ten positions. What year was that?
I, I would have to...
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, or something?
I can't hear you.
She's saying ten?
Two thousand and ten.
So in two thousand and ten, roughly two thousand and eleven, we had seventy-four positions on grants.
We had ten, and then we applied for sixty-four, correct.
So we had seventy-four right around that time. Through attrition and through savings and everything else, we've come down to, over the last...
We had asked for fifty.
...two and a half years, or so, we're down to thirty-five?
Correct. We had asked for fifty to maintain our existing staffing level. Once, again, once we were notified that we did not get that, we looked internally for cost savings. We reached out to the Budget Office to, to help us augment the ongoing costs, and that's where we identified funds for fifteen positions.
Okay.
And, and to put things into perspective, we, we are going to be at, right at about two-hundred-and-seventeen firefighters in the organization, the entire organization.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the deck. We're on the deck.
Thank you.
Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Manager, can you address the question that public comment had for us, both at the beginning and on this topic, that we just haven't considered all options? Can you kind of take us through the multiple meetings that you have had with staff to have confidence that every option, every opportunity has been addressed, and the conclusions drawn?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. We, we have been, staff has been, you know, working on, I mean, we've been working on the budget for months, obviously, and when we got, when we received notification that we were not going to receive the SAFER grant, we actually completely retooled the budget at that point, because we knew that we had to try and fund as many of the fifty that we were gonna lose as possible. And so, we, we have spent countless hours looking at our budget and where we can have, you know, where there are savings to help fund these positions. And as was presented to the council last week, some of the things that we've done is we've taken some of the one-time money that we're anticipating for next week, namely, the RTC funds. And in looking at those funds, you know, saying, what can we do to set ourselves up in the future so that we can fund these positions permanently? Because, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk of, well, we could take the RTC funds, and we could fund these firefighters. And you could do that, but it's really the choice of, do you wanna fund thirty-five firefighters for one year, or do you wanna fund fifteen permanently? Because if we take that RTC money and we fund those positions for one year, we're gonna be back a year from now, talking about layoffs again, potentially thirty-five layoffs again. Or we will have positioned ourselves, because we're, we're taking those funds and, and we're using it for one-time spending, which is what we should be doing, that frees up ongoing dollars. One example is paying off City Hall. We did that to free up the ongoing dollars that would then help pay for the firefighters moving forward. That's a million dollars a year moving forward that helps us fund those fifteen permanently. Without doing that, you're, you're able to fund them for one year, but you're not able to fund them permanently.
And we also have heard that if we have the brownouts closures, whatever words people choose to use, that there would be an impact on response time. Can, Chief, can you speak to that specific question? In fact, one of the public speakers who has just completed a house in Somerset has the concern that her children and mother will be at risk because of a longer time. What of the stations you're proposing, identified that will be browned out or closed? What will the response times be to those neighborhoods, and how does that compare to national standards?
We attempt, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, we attempt to maintain a six-to-eight-minute response time to all of our calls, medical, fire. In the Somerset area, that is primarily serviced by the station on Mayan at the bottom of the hill. That station can get into the central part of the Somerset area within six to nine minutes. Now, if we're talking about going to the farthest end, we are talking about nine to ten, possibly even eleven minutes. It just depends on time of day, conditions of the road, et cetera. We have been servicing that area from that station, and that will be our option moving forward. With respect to District Ten, we've got three stations that are within three and a half miles of that, and we've got Station Two, Station, Station Two on Sutro, Station Four by the university, and Station Eight on King's Road that will be moving into District Ten's territory. Now, they will be taking up, they will be adding to their response time, but you're, the typical drive time, this is without red lights and sirens, from those three stations into the central part of District Ten is six minutes. So if we run with red lights and sirens, that six minutes will be reduced. However, that's still an increase in response, because that station is closed. Minimal, but we can still service that area within our response criteria.
And again, how it relates to national standards and the own, our own study that we participated in with the county several years back?
Our standard, our standards of cover asks for, we set our own standards. As this council, we adopt a standard response criteria of six to eight minutes, and we will be on those edges. We will be on those borders. Again, it depends on the location of the call, and where we are, where we're responding from, and again, road conditions, time of day, and availability of, of resources that will be responding into those districts.
Thank you.
Yeah. So my big issue is taking the general fund and spending it on anything other than core services. So I wanna know, Mr. Chisel, Nevada Land LLC, if they pay their property tax, how much does the City of Reno get?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director, for the record. Currently, I believe, the issue is with the Washoe County District Attorney. The unpaid property taxes are about one and a half million dollars, which we would receive about a quarter of that in the Reno General Fund.
A quarter?
In tax, in property tax. That would be about three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I believe it's from, they have not paid their property tax to date, so that's over several years' accumulation.
So wait, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand a year, is that what you're saying?
No, total, up to now, is what they're owing. They owe this...
They owe three million, right?
One and a half million.
They owe what? They owe one and a half?
One point five million right now.
Why did I thought, I...
Right. So...
That's according to the District Attorney's office.
All right. And so I'm gonna urge council, because we are going into budget, there are some things in there that are not core services. So I want you guys to remember that, because I think it is incredibly important. No disrespect, Mr. Klinger, but I do truly feel that way. I think we, we absolutely have to make public safety a priority.
Labor President?
And it comes down to the general fund for me, and it has since day one, since I stepped into my seat.
Mr. Doggato?
Oh.
You have another one? Okay.
Chief, another question. Two-hundred-and-seventeen is what we would have when we go through with manager's recommendation. What is a right-sized fire department, all things considered, for the City of Reno at this point in time? What's that staffing complement?
If, if, if money were no ob... If money were no object, right now, I would keep our existing staffing levels as we speak. Because we have the ability to up and, you know, to staff stations when we need to and close stations when we need to meet our budgetary limitations. But, right now, for this city, I would keep our existing staffing levels.
Okay, okay. Also, you talked about your criteria that's adopted by the city and the council. Are you going to be bringing back new response time criteria as a result of this action? Is that going to be necessary?
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, I would not be bringing back any changes.
Be working within our existing response time criteria?
We will make every effort to respond. We will make every effort to respond within those time limits. If I see, and if my staff sees, that we are starting to not meet those in a significant statistical manner, then we'll address those accordingly.
I think that's good practice because the public then has an ability to understand, you know, there has been a change to what they can expect in the service levels. Right now, we're saying we're going to work within existing service levels, we hope. We'll evaluate, but if not, it will be a new day in what the public can expect in the service response levels.
Well, again, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, we have taken steps, and these are steps that we have been working on for the last six months. But, we are going to modify the calls that we respond to, the medical calls. We are going to start responding to the highest priority calls. We are, we are working with our medical director to adjust which calls we do respond to. Right now, we currently respond to 100% of our calls, and some of those could potentially be, what I would classify as nuisance calls. So, we will adjust our call-response criteria to the type of calls that we meet. And, you know, so we are taking some steps to modify our responses within the community to keep our units available. You know, and again, you know, this is, like, as I said, this is a difficult, challenging time, and we're going to do everything within our caution, scope, and authority to meet this challenge.
Is this going to put additional demands upon REMSA?
Well, REMSA, the demands are always there, whether it's a nuisance call or not, they respond. Whether we respond to augment their service will be a different question. And I have a meeting with Mr. Goobles tomorrow at 10 o'clock to discuss specifically what our criteria is going to be and what impacts the closings of these stations will have on their system.
It will have impacts on their system, you're saying?
Well, yes.
Okay.
I just said we're going to modify the calls we respond to.
And so, they're aware of that, and do you anticipate a response from then, that they may have to staff up or become more robust in some ways?
I can't speak to the REMSA system. They have a very dynamic staffing up and down based on time of day, et cetera. But, what we have control over, we will address. And again, we're going to look at the most important and most critical calls that we will respond to. If we get a very generic man-down call, we may not respond to that.
Ms. Jordan.
Chief, I know that Sparks has three-person crews, as does the county. If we had available to us three-person crews, would we be able to keep all our stations open?
We've had this discussion before, and the short answer is yes. You know, again, there are some stations that I would not staff with three-person crew. You know, we're talking about a mixed staffing plan. Again, you know, we're laying off 35 people, and that's going to impact whether we have three persons or four persons. I mean, will it open an additional station? Possibly. But, you know, again, you know, we're beyond that. We're cutting our system to what I call the deck, you know, the basement. And, you know, whether we, whether we, go ahead.
Wait a second, though. So, if you had three-person crews, you just said that the response times will have some bit of impact with the reduction of the 35. Now, how, wouldn't that reduction, increase in the response time be lessened if you had a three-person crew staffing up the three browned-out stations?
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, the short answer is yes. If we had a three-person crew, we could open more stations.
Thank you.
And that would impact our response times.
Thank you. To the, to the, to the good, to the good.
Well, we'd be responding accordingly, yes.
Okay, any other questions or anything, Mr. Delgado?
Chief, again, I'm going back to, we applied for a, for a grant for 50 positions. You guys hustled, and we were able to work together as a staff, and we're able to find long-term stability for 15 families, correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question, sir, I'm sorry.
We applied for a grant for 50 positions?
Correct.
We were denied, we hustled, you guys worked all together, we were able to find 15 positions. So, now, there's 15 families that can stay in Reno long-term. So, that dropped the number down to 35, from the 50 to 35.
Correct.
Okay. I believe everyone on this council is priority is first, but we also need to find a way how to pay for it. I'm just trying to figure out, I understand, Councilman Chivi, I'm trying to find money, trying to find funds to be able to pay for that. I, I think we've all been trying to sit down and trying to figure out every best way that we can do that, so, because I think ongoing with the people that came up and during Public Comment, they said they're tired of coming back. They're tired of coming back. Here we are again. We're talking about it again. I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to listen to everyone up here, is how can we, long-term, to make sure that we don't do that again? You know, I was, I was a person, at one time, I was a grant employee, so I understand how on edge that is for anybody to be on a grant. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, I know, what are we doing long-term wise? How can we do that so we're not coming back consistently? I think that's the dilemma we're all dealing with, with priority-wise, and how can that be long-term sustainability? Can you kind of, I know I was in your position, thinking about our position in the sense of saving 50 jobs and us doing the one-time shot, saving all 50? Or do we save 15 ongoing and work with the other 35 firefighters and see what we could do? I'm looking at all different options. I want to keep everybody. I'm looking at all the different options that we can do.
If I understand your question correctly, my, my path forward would be to keep the 15 and keep them sustainable from now on. And as we move forward in future budgets, I would ask for an increase in staffing as we move forward to get us to a point where we can reopen our stations and keep them sustainable. I frankly, I don't want to go through this process again. And I'm sure the 35 that are looking at a potential pig slip don't want to go through this process again. And it's, it's a challenge. It's not something that, you know, it's, none of us in this room enjoy this process.
I know the question was brought up earlier about talking about seniors and seeing if the senior staff members and seeing if there's a feel about seniors that are in that position. I know it's about negotiations, but maybe just the feel of saying, we have young guys on the union layoff list that may have a few years in, and if seniors are looking at saying, you know what, this may be an opportunity for me to step aside and let these younger career guys have a shot long-term wise and stay in Reno. I don't know if that's part of the conversations, but I think that's the sentiment I've heard from others. Along with, I mean, I'll go with that. I mean, I'm sitting up here thinking as best as I can. I don't know if we can push this or delay this anymore with the current budget situation to find ways to save another five, 10 positions. My understanding is you've done some due diligence yourself in reaching out to see if we can find some long-term sustainable jobs for our guys. Can you kind of touch on that a little bit?
Well, once we, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, once we received notice that we did not, we were not awarded, I immediately reached out to my colleagues from Texas to California. And I got some very positive responses, specifically from the city of Boise. Chief Doan was willing to take up to 10. It's my understanding we had nine applicants. I reached out to my good friend in Albuquerque, and he, the city of Albuquerque is currently looking at taking in some of our, of our firefighters. And we've got some, you know, North Lake Tahoe is also looking for firefighters. So, while not a solution, it's an option, and that was my intent. And that's something that I worked hard to do because I wanted our people to have options if we ultimately went down the entire list of 35. So, we have, you know, we've reached out to as many possible avenues as I can within my network of colleagues. And again, we are looking at some internal options to try and offset the number. I have, I've received several emails from some of our senior members that have expressed an interest in retiring, and they want to know if I retire, will that save a job? And the answer is yes. If they retire within three to six months, will we bring them back? Absolutely. There are some costs incurred when we separate an employee from our, from our city. We have cash-outs and payouts and unemployment and these type of things. So, all those have to be factored in. It's not as simple as, you know, come right, come right on back and, you know, it's all even-steven. You know, we have to work with our office of budget and finance to make sure that we have the funds to bring these people back, but that is, that's the plan as we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in too, just to follow up on Councilman Delgado's question as far as, you know, what we've done to reach out. And I'd ask maybe Chief Pitts to come up and address this, but I know that Chief Pitts has some positions that they're recruiting for. Now, obviously, these are not firefighter positions, but he has reached out and worked with Chief Hernandez to offer at least the opportunity for some of these individuals to apply for these positions. And Chief, maybe you can elaborate.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Council Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. As soon as the executive team got knowledge of the loss of the SAFER grant, we started to work over at the Reno Police Department to reach across the table to fire. We had roughly, I think it was about six or seven open and funded positions at that time. Potentially, there's a total of 10 within this budget, as Mr. Klinger had explained in a conversation with Mrs. Bruckus previously. And we said, look, if we can hire 10 firefighters, we'll do that. Deputy Chief Tom Robinson was tasked with working with HR and civil service on a process to make that happen. And I was informed, I was out at the testing this morning with our team out there, that seven firefighters had actually shown up thus far and started the testing process to come over for police, so.
Wait, excuse me, are they coming over as police officers?
They would be trained to be police officers.
Oh, they'd have to go through the academy?
Trying to-
Okay, with those 10 positions unfilled right now, are we, are there safety concerns? I mean, if we don't get those 10, are we going to be at tremendous risk and more risk than we are right now?
Well, I just-
I'm trying to understand where the real deficits are.
I can give you some data right now.
No, I don't want data. I just, I'm just trying to understand.
It'll be evidence-based on point.
He says we're in the basement. Are we in the basement on the police department?
Well, you're at the staffing levels we were in 1991. We went over this last week in budget.
Yeah.
And you have double the jurisdictional responsibility. And in 2009 and 10, we lost 140 positions.
Okay.
When this recession began, and about 60 of those were rifled. And so, what we did is we developed a deconstruction plan to get us out of grants and to rebuild the department incrementally over the next several years. And that's what the senior council here, and obviously those that have, you know, a year and a half experience now, have helped us do. Safety concerns without the 10? Yeah, I have safety concerns for my people out there.
Okay, so-
You saw one of the calls they went to just in December, and thank God they got there in 47 seconds. We would have had a lot of other citizens to bury that day.
Well, it's a tough one. I mean, I'm hearing, the fire department here, it sounds like they're going to be in the basement, meeting up with the police department. We have, I mean, is that what Reno residents are to take away from this?
Well, can I just say something, ma'am? And I hope I'm, with your permission-
Go ahead, Chief.
There's four horses that work in public safety. It's not police by itself, and it's not fire. The first one is the community, and that's a fact. We don't solve crimes without the community. We don't get to calls for service without the community. We don't solve community problems without the community. Police and fire combined. Then there's law enforcement, there's fire service, and then there's your EMS service. In this case, it's REMSA. So, there's four horsemen in this game. And I think that these four horsemen in this valley have done a pretty significant job of keeping this a fairly safe community. I hate, it makes me sick to my stomach to see these young men and women lose their jobs. But, we went through this in 9 and 10, and we had to reinvent ourselves, and we, you have supported us doing that. And I'll hire 10 firefighters tomorrow if that council approves those 10 positions, or this council, excuse me, and we'll work to get them in the Reno Police Department. That's initially where they would go unless that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chief Hernandez, how many people have we laid off in the fire department?
Yeah, I was going to say 60 in totality.
When did you lay the 60 off?
Well, I mean, going back to-
We got the SAFER grant to protect the 60.
Correct. We got the SAFER grant, and we kept those 64, correct. And we didn't lay off any.
That's right. The, you know, the, I do want to clear one thing. The, Mr. Jacobson did come to us several months ago, willing to do some, the union to do some flexible scheduling so that we could put two-man crews in certain areas, and this council rejected those. That was just several months ago, three or four months ago. I do want to make that clear that they did.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to echo what Chief Pitts just said. I mean, we, this has been a long, difficult time for this community because of the recession, the economic impacts, the hits that this community has taken. And to put things into perspective, in 1999, prior to consolidation, we had 255 firefighters. In 60 days, we'll have 217. So, that's where we are, you know? And again, we, as the fire depart, I mean, I'm sorry, as the police department modified how they respond, so will we within the confines that we have the ability to manage. And we will meet, we will make every effort to meet those response times. We will make every effort to ensure that the citizens are protected. If we get down to pump cans and pickaxes, that's what we're going to do because we're the fire department.
Right. Well, I hope that I, one, am going to support, because of the budget deadline and stuff, support passage of Item J3, but I'm going to ask the city manager to look into retirements and to anything else you can on that budget, because we've got a deadline to follow. And we'll be having budget meetings on the 6th and 7th, and I hope that during that time, we can put something together. But, because of the deadlines and times and stuff, I'm going to ask the council to pass Item J3 and we go forward.
Really quickly, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just point out, because I had asked what Nevada Land owes in property tax? And I, and I have the numbers. So, Reno Redevelopment Agency, it's around $259,000. And then, City of Reno is $338,000. So, that's around $600,000. So, I just wanted to clarify that. So, and then one more last thing. How many of you on this council have been, have been on a ride-along? How many? Good. Police, just police?
Police.
Twice? Okay. What about fire?
Twice.
Okay. I just, I got to say, I have, you guys do some amazing work. It's grueling. Bottom line is, I, you know, I hope you guys can truly feel their pain.
I want to tell you something. Anybody that doesn't feel their pain is a sick person. Because I want to tell you right now, laying off people and firing people is not a funny thing to do. It's sickening. I've done it and had to do it for the last 50 years, and it's no fun anytime you have to lay anybody. And you show somebody, you show me somebody that likes laying off somebody or screwing with somebody's family, I'm going to show you a sick puppy.
Mr. Mayor, I echo that, having been in HR for 20 years. You're affecting someone's life. No one I hear takes that lightly, nobody. But, I almost think we need to put these in two different sections. One is the obvious impacts on these families, and I think, Chief, kudos to you for the connections you have and the hand you have reached out to try to find somewhere for these folks to land. Thank you. The second is, how do we best operate and open some of these browned-out stations? And that goes back to where we are in some of our talks with the different groups. And I don't know, and again, I know it's all negotiations, and we have to not say certain things, but I would also ask that Mr. Manager reach out and see if there's an opportunity where we can keep these stations open.
Mr. George?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a, I'm prepared to support the motion. I have a question for the HR Director on the wording of this resolution because there's some ambiguity to me. The fourth whereas, whereas lack of work and/or insufficient revenues is a result of the fire department not being selected as a recipient of the grant? And then, that's repeated, I thought that was repeated somewhere else. Anyway, what does that mean? Lack of work? How do you know that a lack of work? I mean, I'm hearing the chief say quite the opposite, that we, there's a lot of work to be done. Why was the wording of this resolution done that way?
For the record, Mark Donegan, Reno City Attorney's Office. That language comes from the charter. That's the conditions that gives the manager the discretion to do that is lack of work and/or insufficient funds. That's the only place the language comes from.
Well, that gets up to the second whereas, and is that, is that from that quote? Because in that second whereas, you're quoting the charter. And I don't see the lack of work- work reference in there. So is it somewhere else in charter?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow you. The, the, the charter gives the manager discretion to do this when there's lack of work and/or insufficient funds.
I understand.
The next whereas is that such condition, such lack of work and/or insufficient funds is a result of not getting the SAFER grant.
Well, I mean, this is obviously insufficient funds, right? It's not lack of work. So I don't know why that's necessary in this resolution. I think it's, I, I would motion that if we go with this, we strike that lack of work. And, and obviously, that, that provision of charter is not the 3.0205 that's referenced in the second whereas. It's somewhere else that you didn't, you didn't quote, right?
I, I'm not sure I follow you.
Do you have the charter, where it's, this charter says lack of work and/or insufficient funds? What section of charter is that? Do you have that written down somewhere?
I don't off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. Well, I would, I would say that we striped this lack of work. I think it's, it said whereas insufficient revenue. And that's in the fourth whereas. And also, I, on the next with that whereas-
But that's, that says that lack of revenue is the reason we weren't received the grant?
Tracy?
Yeah.
You want to step up on this?
It's not true.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I'm pulling up the charter right now. If you can give me a moment and hold that question, I will get back to you.
Okay. My other question is the, the bottom whereas of this front page. It says, "Has authority determined it is necessary to implement a reduction in force, including civil service and non-civil service employees?" Do we anticipate any non-civil service employees being laid off through this action? I'm just trying to get a fuller understanding. I, I know you're quoting authority, but, you know, if we could tailor it narrowly to the facts at hand, that would, I think, be to better clarity of the council's intent. Ms. Renges?
Renee Renges, Director of Human Resources. At this time, we are not considering any non-civil service employees for layoff.
So why is this in this whereas?
It's designed to give the manager the discretion that he needs that is provided to him under law.
Okay, the broadest authority, but it is not our intent. Okay.
Ready to make a motion, if you want, Mr. Mayor.
We just got it, Chris.
I, I-
We'll leave it as our attorneys run it.
Okay. I mean, you know, sloppy, but-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the resolution. And, and again, I mean, as I stated earlier, I mean, we are in negotiations. And, and the union has the ability to help us save some of these firefighters, plain and simple, in the, as we go through this process. And, you know, if they can come up with whatever percentage they can come up with, as far as give back, I'm personally willing to match it. If they came in and said, we've got 10% that we can give back, I'll match it. I, I, I mean, whatever that number is. I, I agree with everyone at this table. We don't want to see people laid off. And, and again, I agree, praising the chief and helping finding these guys' jobs. But, you know, the thing I'm hearing, I know you're saying you're out knocking on doors, the thing I hear across the board with our unions is everyone's overpaid. When I'm talking to the public, I am constantly hearing, we pay these guys way too much money.
But that's where I say, well, you can't put a price on a life. If it was your family member, your house, you guys are going to think different. I'm sorry. Sorry, we disagree. It's okay.
I'm, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing.
May I ask one other question on this action?
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I will second it. I have a question. The, the question is on the non-civil service employees. Who are the non-civil service employees in the fire department?
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, the only non-civil service is the chief at this time.
Does the charter require us to have a chief?
I believe it is required in the charter. The position is in the charter. I'm not sure it is a requirement. It is a position that is identified in the charter.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The position is identified in the charter. It indicates that that is the only position that's not in civil service in the fire department. And that's a management-level position to assist the council and the city manager in carrying out your policies.
And we're required to have a fire chief?
I would think operationally, it would be best practice.
Okay.
I have, I have one more question. I'm sorry, there's a motion. Second.
Do I have a second?
Again, I go back to the, the being, possibly being top-heavy with 42 captains, six battalion chiefs, and four division chiefs. You talked about going to some of the senior members, seeing if some of the older, closer-to-retirement folks might step down in order to save some of the younger. Was this, and I understand, there's different contracts, and there's, in the middle of negotiation, but was that conversation had with any of them? And can you transition some of, if some of those chose to retire early, could you transition some of those into?
Would you want me to work on that?
No, 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 no. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm talking about, the, I'm talking about the battalion chiefs, the division chiefs, and the captains. I know that, I understand they're two different things. Can you not have the conversation with that group and potentially save some of these?
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, we have had that conversation. And just as a point of clarity, the, the chief officers labor group has maintained one of their positions vacant. It is funded and unfilled, and that is some of the money that we are using to keep some of our 15 firefighters. But I have reached out to the organization to see if there's, not only the, the chief officers, but the, the organization, the rank and file. We've got some senior members that are very, very close to retirement. We are working with the city manager to discuss options with respect to some of our senior members, because if they leave, that would free up a position, and we would offset the 35 that could be laid off. So again, that's a work in progress, you know, and, and it's, it's not as simple, it's not as simple as it sounds. I mean, there's, there's numbers, and we're working with the Office of Management and Budget and the city manager's office. But yes, we have reached out to our senior members, because those will free up positions on the bottom end of the seniority list.
I hope, sure, sure hope we can get there.
One last question. Mr. Manager, this title block of this resolution is very broad, to take all actions required. It is not your intent to eliminate or leave vacant the position of fire chief, is it?
It is not.
Okay. I ask that because under the crisis, some departments, cities have done tremendous reorganization, forming solely public safety organizations under one chief. And that's a trend I've heard of. I, I don't have any examples, but I want to confirm that we will keep that, that top leadership position. Thank you.
If you have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those who oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote of five to... Mr. Klinger, I hope that you step and look into vows or whatever, see what we can do, and look at the budget and see if there's money.
Ms., I'm sorry, but I just want to comment one more thing. Mr. Klinger, please look at subsidizing the baseball stadium. That concerns me. And secondly, a REMSA, revisiting the REMSA contract when we're coming to look at how we're going to pay for core services.
Can I, just a quick clarity on that point. And I know the baseball contract comes up with great regularity in these talks. Just for clarity's sake, I believe it's the next, it's the next four years, out of that $850,000 payment for baseball, is 750 of that is for the fire station construction loan. So the difference, it's not, it's not for the next, I believe it's four or five years, and please correct me, somebody if they have the contract in front of them. We were obligated, for that construction loan, up to 750 of that anyway.
It's probably like three now, since that, last time we made that agreement.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're correct on the, it's 850 now, and 750 of that goes to the fire station loan. I can't remember, I think it's four years.
I think it's four.
Yeah, four.
I think it's four and a half.
Four and a half, Mr. Chisel says. And I, I just want to comment, though, on Councilwoman Shivi's request on REMSA. I will remind the council that this council took action at a joint meeting with the county and with Sparks to move down the path that we did. So all I would ask is that if the council would like to go in a different direction, we can bring that item back to council-
Okay. I think that would be great.
On, we can either bring it back on the 7th, when we have the budget workshop.
Okay.
If, if that's, if that's something council wants to-
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Now, if you have a first round agenda, do you have some... Anybody want to pull up a blank sheet? You want to back break?
Yeah, a little break.
You want to break?
I'm gonna live till I die. I'm gonna laugh.
Wait a minute, you come on.
One year.
Two weeks.
I don't relax, I think.
Hey, Dick.
I didn't say that.
She just said I look younger than you.
I didn't say that.
He did not say that. I know he did not say that.
I wish I had the microphone or something.
Never mind.
You might have said you don't look a year older than me, but you-
Yeah. Call the meeting back, excuse me, call the meeting back to order. On consent agenda, I want to pull item E13 for discussion. Mr. Barrett, you had something you wanted to say or do?
Do we need to approve the rest of it?
Yeah, we need to approve. Any other items pulled from the consent? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item E13, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett just got better looking.
(laughing)
Excuse me, I'm very sorry. I wasn't being that way. I'm very sorry about that, man.
Yeah, do you, do you want to go first?
Well, this is, in an otherwise tough day. At least we have some good, some good things. Hopefully, will brighten, brighten the afternoon a little bit more. In conjunction with the efforts of the graffiti task force, and in recognition of the job that that organization and that group has done, we have with us today Representative from Walmart, who is bringing forth a check in the amount of $1,000 to help us in our efforts to eradicate graffiti in the biggest little city.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm Emilia McClear, Director of Public Affairs for Walmart here in Nevada. And on behalf of our stores here in Reno, we are so pleased to be able to make a $1,000 contribution to the city's graffiti task force.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We got, oh, we got the real one already.
Oh, well, that was good if it's signed. That was, it's no good. All right. All the E's are out of the way. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent on item F1?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay.
This is bill number 6901, Ordinance Amending Reno Municipal Code Title 18 Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.06 and 18.08, in order to allow accessory solar structures without discretionary review, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion? Motion for fair, second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance adoption.
Ordinance, G1 is ordinance number 6330, ordinance annexing to and making part of the city of Reno, certain specifically described territory being .92 acres of property located in the southeast corner of Foal Drive and Casillas Drive in the special planning area Reno-Stad Joint Corridor Plan Low Density Suburban Land Use Designation, Washoe County, Nevada, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item G2.
Which is ordinance number 6331, ordinance confirming the proceedings taken and providing for certain sidewalk, driveway, approach, and street improvements in the city of Reno, Nevada, 2013 Special Assessment District Number One, providing for the payment of the cost and expenses of said improvements, providing for the assessing the cost of said improvements against the parcels of land benefited by said improvements, describing the manner for the collection and payment of said assessments, and providing penalties for delinquent payments, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion?
Second.
Have motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H1, resolution.
Resolution number 7966, resolution approving a grant to the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, EDON, Foundation for a Temporary Installation of Burning Man Art at the Lear Theater for the June 6th, 7th, 2014 TEDx Conference, in the amount of $4,500.
Oh, I have a question.
Motion, second. Discussion?
I do have a question about these next two items for staff. These comes from the Room Tax Fund?
For the record, I'm Christine Fay, Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Managers. That's correct.
And the Room Tax Fund, I, I see in the staff report, it's resolution 79, or, well, I don't know what resolution is. How does the Room Tax Fund work? Where, where, is there some action that was taken a long time ago to do a set aside for arts and culture out of the room tax?
That's correct. And so this is part of that, there's a portion of one-half of 1%, which is for parks, and it's also for tourism and arts. And so this comes from that other portion.
Okay, so there's 1% for parks.
Well, there's one, no, there's 1%, and then one-half of 1% is for parks, and then tourism and other downtown, arts and culture and downtown related. There's a whole little bundle.
Okay, so it's parks, comma, arts and culture, comma.
And, and tourism and other, other downtown.
Okay, okay. I did during the year look and ask to see a spreadsheet on all the room tax regionally. I don't sit on the RCBA where a lot of that goes on. And I, I do see that the city gets its share of 1%. I think it's around about $870,000 or so that we, we get.
I, I don't typically see the whole amount.
I guess maybe the budget director has some answers. I'm just trying to figure out, then if we divvy that, that money down further, what's the thinking on what goes to parks and what goes to these arts and culture and installations? How's that, how and when is that decision made? I haven't seen it called out in the budget hearings.
For the record, Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget. We can certainly provide a breakdown of all those for the, and we're planning on doing so on the next budget workshop, so you can see all the allocations for the room tax. Half of that allocation does, as Christine Fay mentioned, go to parks, recreation, and community services, as far as the allocation is broken out. The rest, you can see divvied up in the, in the chart that we will show you.
Does some go to DAT?
I'm sorry?
Does some go to DAT?
No, it goes to Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. It goes to, you know, various areas that have a direct impact, impact on downtown or tourism-related functions.
Okay. I will look at that then, when it comes forward.
Be happy to bring that up.
Thank you.
I think that's the way it was passed at the legislature.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that's true. I, I thought it was-
From what I remember, it was.
Well, it might be worth a revisit, because I thought it was, the city council decided it was going to do parks, which, parks and arts and culture, and-
I think, I thought it was restricted when it came.
Okay. Well, we'll see that.
By the legislature, but we can look at it.
We'll see that next week.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll call for the vote.
All in favor?
You'll call for the vote, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H2.
Resolution number 7967, resolution approving sponsorship to Art Town for opening and closing night performance, says of the 2014 Art Town Festival by the Reno Arts and Culture Commission, in the amount of $15,000.
Move to approve, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H3.
Resolution number 7968, resolution directing the deputy city treasurer, the finance director, to give notice of the sale of properties, subject to the lien of a delinquent assessment, ratifying all actions previously taken, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion?
Motion, second. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H41. Resolution H41.
Mr. Mayor, the first one- that have a direct impact on downtown or tourism-related functions.
Okay, I will look at that then when it comes forward. Thank you.
I think that's the way it was passed at the legislature.
I'm not entirely sure that's true. I thought it was...
From what I remember, it was.
Well, it might be worth revisiting because I thought it was, the city council decided it was going to do parks, which, parks and arts and culture and...
I thought it was restricted when it came by the legislature.
We'll see that next week.
Right.
Okay, I'll call for the vote.
All in favor?
You'll call for the vote, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we had a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-2.
Resolution Number 7967, Resolution Approving Sponsorship To Art Town For Opening And Closing Night Performance Says Of The 2014 Art Town Festival By The Reno Arts And Culture Commission In The Amount Of $15,000.
Move to approve, do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-3.
Resolution Number 7968, Resolution Directing The Deputy City Treasurer, The Finance Director, To Give Notice Of The Sale Of Properties Subject To The Lean Of A Delinquent Assessment Ratifying All Actions Previously Taken And Providing Other Matters Properly Relating Thereto.
Motion? Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-41. Resolution H-41.
Mr. Mayor, the first one is a staff report and then H-42 is a resolution.
Do we need a staff report?
I'd like a brief one.
Okay, brief.
For the record, Bill Goff, Senior Civil Engineer with Community Development. Basically, this segment of Putnam Drive is what was identified on a parcel map of 3197. This area was offered for dedication. The improvements were never built. That offer is sitting out there at this point. It was offered by Sierra Pacific Power Company. They no longer have a need for it or desire. It's not improved. They need basically us to reconvene that, our rights and titles back to them so that they can convey that property to the adjacent property owners.
You know, I, there's some history on this. I...
Yeah, because wasn't there a park, or supposed to be a park?
Have you had any neighborhood outreach with any folks in that neighborhood? Because as a result of this, did the, who asked for this?
Well, Sierra Pacific Power has asked for that. They're in discussions with the adjacent property owner for that property. A portion of it was, it came in for an abandonment request as they did a development. Let me give you a map. Okay. Yeah, this area, the western, the very western portion of it was abandoned or requested abandonment. We filed an abandonment.
Show us where the western is on that. Okay.
That area in there was abandoned. In reality, the abandonment of an offer of dedication is not the proper vehicle in discussions with legal. We shouldn't have done the abandonment back in 2000, but it did go through. They were reparsled based on that. What we're asking now, or what Sierra Pacific is asking, is basically for us to reconvene the entire area that was shown on that map. None of it was improved. And we don't have a need to accept it as a public, public street. It's not a public street. It's not identified for fire purposes or emergency vehicle purposes. And it's not, no longer, it's not shown on any improvement plans to be improved.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to adopt. Oh, sorry.
I thought you already read.
Yeah, this is moved to accept the staff report and I'll read the resolution.
Yeah, okay, we got the motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H-42, Resolution.
Resolution Number 7969, Resolution Pursuant To NRS 268.050 Determining That The Reconvenance Of A Roadway Known As Putman Drive Offered For Dedication To The City Of Reno On Parcel Map Number 3197 With The Offer Deemed To Remain Open Pursuant To NRS 278.390 Located On Parcel Number 002-040-62 And 002-551-20, 002-553-01 And A Portion Of Parcel 002-551-19 Is In The Best Interest Of The City Of Reno And Its Residents And Setting For The Terms Of Such Convenance And Authorizing The Mayor To Issue An Offer Of Reconvenance To Sierra Pacific Power Company.
Move to adopt.
Have motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We just got the second. We got it in the second.
The first motion was to accept the staff report and the second motion was to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, but in the proposed motions by staff, there's two motions they wanted. The second one is to authorize the mayor to issue the written offer of conveyance. But that was in the resolution, wasn't it?
Correct. So adopting the staff report provides that, I mean, adopting the resolution does provide that. You're accurate.
Okay, let's go to Community Development, item J-1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fred Turnier, Community Development Director. And today before you is the 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan Regarding Our, The City's Entitlement allocations For The Community Development Block Grants For The Home Consortium Monies And Emergency Solutions Grant. I put basically, back in fiscal year 1011, we essentially had a lot more money coming from the federal government. Today, we've stabilized about 1.8 million for the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Home, it's about a million. And Emergency Solutions Grant, that one fluctuates. What I want to mention here is that we're beholden to the federal government and their allocations to the cities across the country for how much we do get. And that formula is based on population. Here are some of the additional resources that we get as part of our allocation within the community. I'd like to talk a little bit about our proposed CDBG projects. And these items are, like the bond repayment, that's a previous council action. So we're essentially on the hook to pay back these funds. We have 382,500 for a bond repayment on 10 North Virginia and the CAC. The good news is that that bond payment is over as of December of this year. So this will be our last bond payment on that. We do pay for one FTE, code enforcement officer, about $100,000. That's spread throughout all our code enforcement officers because when you're fighting blight, it may show up anywhere within the community. We also have monies for pedestrian ramp improvements, home accessibility, and also the Community Assistance Center, the CAC, for public services that supports our homeless shelter. I'd like to point out the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. In the past, the city has, staff has proposed specific projects regarding the Neighborhood Revitalization Project based on internal discussions. This year, we did a little differently. It's more of a lump sum based on a need within the community. There is need out there between public works and parks and rec for sidewalks, for pedestrian accessibility. But we also wanted to go and work with the city council members and public officials to determine where the most appropriate need would be in the community. Regarding our funds for the Washoe County Home Consortium Housing Projects, this is really a regional effort of all the entities, Washoe County, the city of Sparks. And depending on the year, monies flow towards the jurisdiction that is in need of affordable housing. This project, The Village at North, is about $1.2 million. And that's up by the university for affordable housing rehab. Last year, we had the Sterling Apartments in Sparks, which was about a little over a million dollars in rehabilitation. That is, that is on Virginia Street. If you notice, if you're heading south on Virginia Street by the university, it would be on the west side of Virginia Street. Right now, it's a white cinder block building. It's an existing building. And what they're looking at, you can't do student housing, affordable housing, but they're looking at low to moderate income, about $33,000 for a family of four. And also, the UNR Regional Center, that's one of the biggest employment centers in northern Nevada. So on top of having all the kids there, you do have a significant amount of employees in that area. The Emergency Solutions Grants, basically that helps fund the Community Assistance Center, but also it helps with utility payments for people in need. And also the HMIS, that is actually a region-wide tracking, I'm sorry, it's not tracking, it's a registration system for our clients at the CAC. So basically, we're going to get to a point where we can track someone coming into the shelter and what services they are using within the shelter. There's been questions about people maybe going through the system, a six-month process in and out. With this implemented, we'll be able to track that throughout the region and who's getting the services and what type of services. Part of the funds in our administration and planning grant funds is that we have plans and projects that we're required to do. And we have our consolidated plan, which we're looking to outsource that to a consultant to help us develop that. And that addresses some of the needs for housing and homelessness and strategies associated with it. The analysis of implements to, impediments to the fair housing, we're talking about right now our annual action plan and also what we call our CAPR, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. A little bit more about the CDBG program. At least 70% of the CDBG program must fund our LMI, our Low To Moderate Income. Again, that's about $33,000 for a family of four. We're limited on what we can spend it on. We can't spend it all on admin. We can spend up to 20% on admin and planning. Public services are items such as the homeless shelter, that's our Community Assistance Center, and other limitations on blight reduction. So when you look at how much we can spend for code enforcement, there are some limitations in how much we can spend on that. We just had an audit two weeks ago. And what I'm hearing, this is some of the preliminary information coming out, is that they are satisfied with the city of Reno, which were the largest entitlement community within northern Nevada. CDBG fund, funded projects must be eligible and meet national objective. And I'm just going to briefly touch on this because some people have brought up, can we pay for, you know, can we pay for grass reinstallation? And the short answer is no, we can't pay for maintenance, but we can pay for, say, playground equipment. We could pay for sidewalks. We can pay for personnel to address slum and blight. Again, we fund a code enforcement officer. And also people in need, the homeless shelter as part of our getting people back into housing program. So we have some examples of eligible activities, which includes relocation assistance for people in need for housing, clearance and demolition of blight projects. We can't hold land. It's not like we can land bank on something. If we have a plan for an affordable housing project, we can buy a piece of property, tear down that piece of property and build new affordable housing. An example of that is the Oliver Montello Houses that recently the council conveyed over to the Reno Housing Authority. Ineligible activities, basically government expenses, general government expenses, political activities, construction of just new, non-affordable housing. And I have a snapshot here. The green is the CDBG eligible areas. And again, we have quite a bit in certain wards. And this is the first time we've really broken them up by wards. And this is over the past year, funding distribution. The gold right there is Ward 3. Ward 1 is the blue. The gray up there is Ward 5. Ward 4 is the burgundy there. And Ward 2, I apologize, you didn't have any, zero. But I do have a map out in the front in the lobby also that gives a little bit more detail. And I do have maps here also if we want to look into a little bit more detailed areas of the city. So our allocation for CDBG is approximately 1.8 million. Planning and administration that pays for our four FTEs to administer our variety of programs. It also includes monies for consultants to help us with our housing elements. The human services, that's the Community Assistance Center. Physical improvements, that includes monies towards a street, not a street, but sidewalk improvements such as that. The total allocation for the home consortium, we have smaller planning and administration. And for our home projects, about $838,000. And that money, again, with that affordable housing project we showed, the 1.2 million, that money is used to leverage projects such as that. Again, that's a regional effort that we participate in. And in fact, just more than participate, we help lead that organization within the community. A little bit more detail regarding our CDBG programs. Again, the city has made a commitment to the Community Assistance Center. A little bit about that, we have received direction from the city council to establish two homeless task force to address some of the day-to-day interactions of the homelessness and the business owners. And also putting together a local government homeless task force to talk about permanent financing, governance and overall operations of that facility. As of today, we are obligated to fund that program. Again, as I mentioned, we have code enforcement officers on that. Physical improvements, the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. What we put in the action plan, again, different from what we did before, is that typically you would just see a list of projects from the city. Today, we're asking the city council members, we're asking the planning commissioners at the next meeting on May 7, what projects should we be targeting within the community? But some of the items I've heard so far regarding walkability and accessibility is sidewalk improvements in and around the Pat Baker Park area in the northeast, improvements at Stewart Park, looking at the opportunity for Wi-Fi on our plaza. That, we would have to reach out to our federal partners to see if they're okay with that and we can make a logical nexus to that. General improvements to parks that could potentially free up general fund monies for maintenance. And again, talking with the Parks and Rec Director Julie Conway, we are looking to see where those opportunities are. And also looking or talking with our federal partners about other innovative opportunities that other jurisdictions have used their CDBG monies for. Regarding the public participation and input, we're currently in a 30-day review process for our annual action plan. What's different from past years is that the city council has seen this once and the community has received the public advertisement. We're having this meeting. We're also having a meeting with the planning commissioners and meeting with them individually to talk to them about some of the needs and educating them about this process. And also, we do have this 30-day public comment period open. It's on our city's website. And we welcome comments from the council members, the commissioners and the public in general. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Very good, short presentation. Any questions right now?
I have a few comments. You know, I guess, no, this is important. This is really, I think, an opportunity to make some decisions because we do have some resources. And it's exciting. We have resources with the expiration of the CAC payment. And I think it really is time to think comprehensively and strategically about what our next commitment to homeless services in this community are. I think that, I had wished that our homeless task force had moved a little bit further, was a little further along. Because I think that it's time to think about what's next. We've, obviously, what's next is making, using the overflow because we've been doing that. And I think that maybe through the housing needs assessment, we'll decide what is the moving the homeless to housing project. And that is a project that probably will be used with home funds, which are not small. And rather than developers come in and tell us how they're going to like to use those, we say, we'd like to see the home funds used as our next objective to help move the homeless to housing and maybe even kick in some CDBGs. So that's something that I was certainly...
Transitioning?
I am, Mayor, I am. And looking at our land. And so I think we need to hold that as a priority. With the housing needs analysis, we're mandated every five years to update our housing plan. Mr. Turnier, would we have an opportunity through that scope of work to look at housing opportunities downtown that would be market or lower market rate? Does it look that broadly or is it narrow to the housing needs of your low to moderate income folks?
Through to the mayor, there are opportunities to look into downtown areas that are eligible for the location of these facilities.
Okay, because I guess, you know, downtown's come back when housing comes back. And we have a lot of opportunity. I walk around and I look sometime at, you know, two, three-story buildings. And I wonder what's going up on that second floor. Is there housing there? Could there be housing? I think we'll find that information through this study. I guess another comment I have on the broader CDBG is, I'm not, I went to the RTC board the other day and spoke about the need to implement the pedestrian and ADA transition plan robustly by RTC, who has the lion's share of the taxpayers' money to do transportation improvements in this region. I think us doing a little $50,000 here is maybe not the best use. I really would ask again that we prioritize ADA transition be done at the RTC level. So when I see that, our modest effort here and there, and also in our street budget, it makes me feel that there's other more strategic avenues. But I want to mention two other points. And one is, I don't think we've ever used sewer, matched CDBG with sewer. And I just, I know it's done a lot. I did it myself in another community. I did it myself in another community. We have a lot of aging, remember the map of the aging sewer pipes, it was all red? I think we have a lot of sewer pipes in these low to moderate income areas that we need to, attention to, so I would offer that as a new way that Reno could do it, and it could be cost-effective with our annual sewer project, and I guess, I don't know if Mr. Flansburgh had a comment on that or not, and then, my last comment is, those loan programs came up last time, remember, a couple? I'm not entirely committed to do those again. If we, you know, we were, we did it for a short period, we had a memo came out in the last month or so and showed how the loans program are going. I'm not sure it's the most effective way to use our CDBG funds, and I'd open that to other comments, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Flansburgh about using, and you've probably done it in other communities, match CDBG with sewer.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Actually, a couple of years ago, in the Oliver Carville area, we actually used CDBG funds as part of a project retrofit. I also would make a recommendation, in the next couple of years, we're going to have another project in the Oliver Montello area where we could look at using CDBG funds, and again, some of the area that we use CDBG funds in that, those are for the laterals that go out from the street to the edge of the right-of-way, so that has been an area that we have used in the past.
Are those typically a personal responsibility under our general approach, or are they a city responsibility?
Laterals are a responsibility of the individual homeowners, and so the, as far as the CDBG and being a benefit to LMI, that is where we can sometimes match that and take it out to the right-of-way.
But what about using it for a main line, say, down Dickerson Road? And I don't know if that's in poor condition or not, but I'm just using that as an example because it's in my ward.
Yes.
And it is an eligible area. What about using it much more for the main lines?
It can also be used for main line.
Okay. Do you have, could you provide Mr. Turnier with a list of five tough, hot spot sewer places where maybe it would make sense to roll this money in on an annual basis?
Be happy to.
Okay, okay. And on the loan program, I'd like to hear a little bit more of an update, because I think in that, that package of money there, there's some thinking about whether or not to continue this program.
Bring it back to us.
We can bring that back in assessment, and again, we're in a reporting period right now, getting some, some new reports from our loan program, and we'll be able to report that back out to the council.
Is that the startup entrepreneurial funds?
That's part of it. There were two, there was VEDC doing some loans, and then there was the startup entrepreneur one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Make a recommendation?
Yes.
To approve the staff report, action plan.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item J2, Public Works. Anybody got anything you need to do? There you come.
Just authorize him to do the business impact study?
Yes. Have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's a very nice report, sir.
Was that a motion?
Thank you, Jason.
It was a motion, sure.
You waited all afternoon for that, Jason.
I'm not sure that was even a motion.
All right, now we go to boards and commission appointments. Any boards and commission appointments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. It's, the recommendation is that the, we appoint Alicia Barber to fill the SHPO position to the HRC.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other boards and commission appointments? Any discussion, potential approval of interlocutant agreement in Washoe County for conducting 24, yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Is there a second?
You guys can.
Is that you?
Jimmy, open the door.
Identification of mayor and council meeting, agenda items for the future, anything? All right.
I would like to direct staff to review the principles of the agreement for the REMZA contract.
Okay.
And also the impact of not charging a REMZA fee, I'd like them to look at that, and the contract, the contract length and operational issues to include dispatch and transport.
Okay.
Could we expand that a little and make sure?
Sure, go ahead.
And make sure it includes some legal input on what that would look like, and kind of what the, what the options available, and should something occur, what plan B might be?
Yep.
I have an item, Mayor.
Huh?
I have an item.
All right, go ahead.
I would like an update on the Kiski-Lane relinquishment program that Endot briefed us on a year ago or so, the right-of-way relinquishment program.
Okay. Any others? We'll move on down to any liaison reports. Ms. Brackus?
I have none, Mayor.
Ms. Edrum? Mr. Delgado?
Nada.
Mr. George? Ms. Jordan? Ms. Shievi?
Nothing.
Reports on any conference or professional meetings. Discussion, direction to city managers, two more hours of staff time to prepare an update presentation regarding Think Reno Idea Portal. Mr. Delgado?
So I don't know if this needs two hours, it's more, maybe you could do it as a memo for, for us to see what's going on.
Okay. All right, Ms. Shievi?
So I would like to...
Do a resolution for postal service?
Yes, I would like to, yes, I'd like to do a resolution for postal service in favor of Sixth Day. It's good for the economy, I'm getting a lot of constituents concerned about it, especially a lot of my senior folks, and I would like to ask that we support a resolution.
Will you be giving us the wording for that?
I, Kayden?
As long as somebody's got the wording, get it to us, and Marcia will put a resolution together, or not a resolution.
Yes, I think Kayden has already, she's done a tremendous job on it.
All right, okay. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Brackus, you had a...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor, could we go back to item L1? I, there was one other thing, I'd like an update, possibly a memo form from staff. I read last week that there's a proposal for a drive-through restaurant at the corner of First Street in Liberty. When I opened the zoning ordinance, I don't see that drive-through restaurants are allowed in that downtown part of our Transit Orient Development corridor, and I'm wondering what interpretation is being used to allow that, and if that interpretation could be used to allow additional drive-throughs on other corners on that intersection, First and Liberty, or Ryland, where they meet, and also at the vacant Heritage Bank location on South Virginia Street. So I'll look for that memo, thank you.
Okay.
So that was Liberty and Ryland?
It's the US Bank Building that is just north of the federal building.
It's the bank building there on the corner.
Yes, there's going to be a drive-through restaurant there.
It's a Starbucks.
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 It's not First and Liberty, that's...
I know, we were...
First Liberty, that can't be, that's Liberty in Virginia.
Liberty in Virginia, yes.
Okay.
I do have, I do have a question. We had asked at, soon after we were elected last year, when we were dealing with the baseball stuff, we had talked about during the budget process of getting a report on a number of kind of checklist items relative to, to the stadium and economic development in the area, et cetera, and I haven't seen anything, and, but, to that point, I'd like to get that report, but I also think, given the public's investment and the city's approval of its partnership with the stadium, that maybe it's a good idea to have one of the representatives come once a quarter and, and give us an update on what's diversification of things they're doing there and what's happening economically around the area. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Kayden Smatievich, Assistant City Manager. May I ask for some additional clarification on item L4? It has been our practice to send a memo monthly to the council with updates on the Think Reno Idea Portal, so wanting to make sure that we're understanding your request and bringing you the information that you want, would be just looking for...
So what I'm looking for is, I get the, I get what you guys provide, and you got the Excel sheet and everything else. What I'm seeing is, what's next? And how do you guys, as a management department, what do you guys do with that information? How do you guys split that up? What goes into action, what doesn't? That kind of info.
Be happy to provide that, thank you.
Do we have any public comment cards? Anybody wish to say anything? The chair will entertain a motion for my famous motion.
Famous?
I love it better than any motion we have. Motion's made and seconded, we're adjourned.
I love it, too.
My favorite.